Good evening and welcome to the January 23, 2024, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Before we begin, I think it's important to recognize the town of Milton lost a very distinguished civic servant last week. Frank Desmond was a dedicated Miltonite from being a graduate of Milton High through his service as a town meeting member for more than 30 years. He was a trustee of the cemetery, he was on the school committee, he was chair of the school committee, he was on the school building committee 20 years ago, more than 20 years ago, and was critical in securing $100 million for those schools to be built. He was dedicated to baseball in Milton, including the Babe Ruth League, and certainly to education. And so I think it's appropriate for us to take a moment to reflect on and take a moment to remember and take a moment of silence for Frank Desmond. Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. For public comment, we allot 21 minutes, up to 20 minutes, up to three minutes per speaker. The way we typically do it in the hybrid age is we take the first public comment speaker here in person, and then we go to someone online, if we have someone online, and then we alternate between in-person and online. If you're interested in public comment, just sign up at the sheet, and we'll begin. So do we have someone in person for public comment? Mr. Vaughn? And so Mr. Milano will keep the 21-minute clock, and I will keep the three-minute clock. Unfortunately, we have to be fairly strict about the timing because of the law and because of the necessity of giving everyone the same amount of time. And so I'll give you a heads-up at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, just to let you know. And go ahead, just give your name and address.
Can I allow my neighbors to come up and join me?
Sure, absolutely. Have them stand behind you, or if they want to bring seats up, that's fine as well.
Okay, thank you. So I'll start talking.
Well, no, you can wait until they're all up.
Oh, okay. All right, I don't want to.
Haven't started the clock yet, so we'll give everyone a chance. We don't want people to rush. All right, everybody ready? All right, so you can go ahead, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay, you need my name and address?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, Joe Curran, Grafton Ave. The residents of adjacent streets to Governor's Road are in agreement. Governor's is a busy cut-through street. The volume and speed has increased on all adjacent streets. Something clearly needs to be done to slow traffic down on Governor's Road. Any solution should not impact adjacent neighborhoods, as always has happened in the past. Previous boards have been unwilling to test speed humps and stop signs. Blocking and restricting travel has never been successful. Some of us here tonight were present in 1978 for the peaceful protest standouts that blocked access to Governor's Road, and the fierce conversation with town leaders before, during, and after the rocks were removed. We also wish to remind the board of the cause and effects of the attempted changes about 10 years ago, with chains and other travel restrictions and the traffic chaos that happened. Town Hall and the city of Quincy Mayor's office were inundated with complaints, and the tests were stopped almost within days of the same as when it started. It also separated Milton residents on Gardner Road from access to the town they live in. In closing, a test of speed humps and stop signs, similar to Harland Street and Hillside Street, is more favorable to some. Blocking traffic flow should not be considered. Any agenda items need to be clearly identified as Governor's Road traffic changes, so all voices can be heard. Those gathering around us tonight are just a few who have expressed concern about this topic, and any changes should not happen without community input.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. And just to let you and everyone else know, there is a Traffic Commission meeting on Thursday at 6:00 PM, in which they will be having a presentation about the Governor's Road issue. And then I suspect that we'll have it on our agenda at the next meeting after that. So that date hasn't been set yet, but we're going to try to set that tonight.
Okay, just make sure you let everybody know. Thank you.
We do our best. We do our best.
There's a point of audit, this is two weeks in a row. Did I see that meeting as in the Cronin?
Yes.
It might be advisable to remove that meeting, if it's available.
Yeah, it might be tough at this point, just because of the posting requirement, because we're within 48 hours. We are.
Yeah, now we are.
But we can look into it. We can look into it.
Logistically, if we can do it, it would make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. All right, let's go to our online participants, and if you could promote Hal Munger. Mr. Munger, if you unmute yourself, and if you just give your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes, up to three minutes, and I'll give you an indication of 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, sounds good. My name is Hal Munger. I live in Precinct 7 at 63 Granite Place in East Milton. Zoning codes are a complex series of regulations that shape our lives, dictate where housing, retail, and parks are located, along with who can access them. They can be confusing even for experts. One can not possibly understand all details associated with zoning through a quick conversation while heading into the local grocery store. As a registered architect, I understand that zoning codes were originally created in 19th century to prevent fire hazards and increase access to light and air. Today, exclusionary zoning codes, like those currently found in Milton, limit racial and economic diversity while artificially raising housing costs. Deviating far from their intended purposes, these exclusionary rules promote the construction of single-family houses over a diverse housing stock for residents with different needs. As a result, high costs are pricing out middle-income families and prevent older residents from downsizing. These codes should not impede our evolving societal and community needs. The MBTA Communities Act will benefit Milton by increasing our supply of smaller units, compatible in scale with single-family homes located in walkable neighborhoods with duplexes, townhouses, and apartments. By increasing housing stock, housing costs will moderate, and people will have more options to stay in their community. As an East Milton resident, I refuse to let fear and misinformation influence my vote. I ask my neighbors to join me on February 13th to say yes to diversifying our housing, yes to complying with the law, and yes to helping Milton thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munger. Do we have someone in person? Were you on the list?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we, can we go with Mr. Stone, and then you, sir? Is that okay? All right. I'll give you an indication. You give your name and address, and then I'll give you an indication of 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Good evening, members of the Select Board and whoever is watching. I'm Jeff Stone. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 1. I live at 15 Luff Berry Street. I first moved to Milton with my family 59 years ago this year, and have served as a, I know I don't look that old.
[laughing]
And have served as a town meeting member for something like 12 or 15 years. I really don't know. I want to express my appreciation to the Select Board for its support of the zoning plan we passed at town meeting in December to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. And I hope the board will encourage Milton voters to vote yes to reaffirm that plan on February 13th. In my opinion, Milton has a very well-functioning government, which includes our elected and appointed boards, like the Select Board, our town administrator, and all the department heads and staff. Not all towns have as well-functioning a government as the town of Milton. Specifically, I want to mention our representative town meeting, where we have almost 300 people who volunteer their time to, at two or three long meetings a year on budget and zoning issues. Town meeting members have an impressive range of professional and business experience and educational backgrounds that they bring to bear in deliberations on all the articles. It was only after participating in hours of discussion on the proposed MBTA Communities Law zoning plan that a full two-thirds of town meeting members voted to approve the plan that we will vote on again on February 13th. I hope that residents have faith that their elected town meeting members listened carefully and voted judiciously to approve the plan. A yes vote will enable us to control how we comply with the MBTA Communities Law, and even to adjust it as we go along. And we will avoid really chaotic and costly consequences if we fail to comply. I will close with a personal note. People often are wary of new residential development in town. I've had a little experience with this myself in recent years, where houses on two sides of my property, to my right and behind me, have increased dramatically in size and cut off some of the sunlight that hits my property. I grumbled at first, and after a week or two, I got over it.
30 seconds, Mr. Stone.
I have good neighbors, and they have a right to increase their living space. So in that spirit, I hope that we will vote yes to reaffirm the zoning plan on February 13th. It will allow for the potential creation of housing units that are needed both in Milton and in Massachusetts, and we will be complying with state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. All right, going to the online participants. The next one is Sarah Hart. Ms. Hart, oh, there you are.
Hi there. Good evening.
If you could give your name and address, and then I will give you an indication at, you have up to three minutes, and I'll give you an indication of 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, sounds good. My name is Sarah Hart, and I live at 55 Woodland Road. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly, and thank you to the Select Board for your service. My name is Sarah Hart. As I stated, I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 5. I work at Beth Israel in Boston, have four kids, two of whom are in Milton Public Schools, which we love. I'm commenting on the February 13th special election. I'm strongly in favor of a yes vote. I'm in favor of a yes vote because I think that complying with the law is the right thing to do, not just because I believe in following the law, but also because I think Milton has to do its part to help solve Massachusetts' housing crisis. I used to live in a multifamily rental on Brook Road. My husband used to take the trolley to and from work. It was a great experience. During our five years in that apartment, we were able to save money for our house, large enough for our expanding family. Now we have four kids, one kid in college and another one on his way there. The terrific house we own now is going to be much too much house for us soon, and we will have to, and we want to have affordable options to move to a smaller place and stay here in Milton, a town that we love. This law gives more people the opportunity to do what we have done and what we hope to do. It's intended to give people more options. It's great that Milton has the options it has now, from denser neighborhoods to ones with larger lots. But my husband and I have seen too, over the 14 years that I have lived here, that more and more people are unable to afford those options. We see so many who work here unable to afford an option to live here, our teachers, others, community members. We see people who want to downsize increasingly unable to find options to do so. It's not right, and it needs to change, and we all need to do our part. We need to think of Milton not as a gated community, where we come in and shut the door behind us, but as a vibrant and welcoming one. I hope people will vote yes to give more people more options and continue to make Milton a more welcoming place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. All right, let's come back to the in-person, and someone who just signed up. If you could just give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes, and I'll give you the high sign at 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
Great, thank you. Andy LaClare, 24, Grafton Ave. So I stood earlier today to join my neighbor with respect to the concern relating to the Governor's traffic diversion. I think the one thing I would like to add is that this is not specifically for myself, and I know some neighbors are still in the audience that share this concern. This is not, for me, a traffic concern. This is a safety concern. So just Grafton South, as I think a lot of us like to call it, with respect to state, down to Edge Hill. I can tell the board that right now there are 12 children from grade six and younger, two of which are sixth graders, 10 of which are from kindergarten to third grade. And again, I believe on the street, I had the name on my tongue, but on the street to the right going towards Edge Hill, there's another four children in elementary school. I can tell the board that my son, I won't start there. So in the fall, one child, an individual on State Street, passed a school bus, almost hit a child. My son, crossing the street on the sidewalk, was struck by a car because they pass, so there's, obviously, it goes from one lane on Edge Hill down to the three lanes on that awful traffic light, which I know that we have little, the board can do with right now, and that's more for a Traffic Commission. But in that, that sidewalk is positioned perfectly to allow for a car to pass, a car that would presumably stop for a pedestrian in that sidewalk. That happened, someone passed and struck my child's bike. My oldest, who was in sixth, had a similar experience while walking. I've been dodged by a car going 35, 40 miles an hour at my house, trying to get out of a car's way while I'm playing basketball with my children. This has nothing to do with me not wanting to wait an extra 5, 10 minutes to get to work in the morning. This has everything to do with the safety. That, 16 children on Grafton South, that pales to comparison to the entirety of Grafton in its whole. I can tell the board that I believe last time I counted, it was 17 to 18 children on the elementary school bus. And Grafton North has many children. One of those children was the one that was almost struck by the individual passing a school bus. So diverting traffic through.
30 seconds, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Diverting traffic through Grafton will pose a significant threat and safety concern to the children and the families that live on Grafton. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. LaClare. All right, going back to the online, Philip Joe Henning is the next person. Mr. Joe Henning, if you could unmute yourself and just give your name and address, sir?
Hi, my name is Phil Joe Henning. My address is 23 Parkway Drive in Milton. I signed the petition with 2,999 other Miltonians to put the idea of the MBTA housing on the ballot. And on February 13th, I plan to vote no. And it's not because I don't want MBTA housing, I do. It's the way the town has decided to distribute the MBTA housing that I find objectionable. I disagree with two other commenters. I don't think what is being done is fair, and to, let's say, particularly the people in Precinct 7. And I think we have to strive to distribute the housing more fairly. So I do support MBTA housing. I agree with it 100%, but I don't agree with the way the town is implementing MBTA housing. I think we need to be more fair. I think we need to distribute it throughout the possible MBTA areas, let's say, the 240 bus line, let's say, Precinct 9 where I live. Let's put the housing so that we all welcome newcomers to our neighborhoods and promote accessibility to the MBTA. You know, maybe the state could be convinced that the 240 bus line is as acceptable as the Matapan Trolley. So I would vote no. I would urge others to vote no, and I would urge the board to go back to Andrea Campbell and tell her that she should not interfere with the political processes going on in town. Even if they don't hit her deadline, we should have the right to express our opinions about the fairness of MBTA housing and where we would want it located in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Henning. How much time do we have, Mr. Milano?
I have 7 minutes and 40 seconds.
7 minutes, do we, all right. Do we have anyone else in person who would like to participate in public comments? Seeing none, do we have anyone else online? Just raise your hand if you're on the phone. Although I don't see anyone on the phone, but if you're on the phone, you can press star, star nine. Yep, star nine. So we will give it one more minute to see if anyone raises their hand to participate in public comment. Going once, going twice, and I don't see anyone, so I think we can, we can put an end to item three and move on to item four, which is discussion update with Chief Chris Madden of the Milton Fire Department regarding the new fire headquarters building. And we also have Mr. Brian Walsh as the chair of our fire building committee. So gentlemen, if you want to come up and give the board and the town an update on our new fire headquarters, which our board and several others just had the opportunity to tour before this meeting, and it was a great opportunity, and it's a great facility. So if you want to go ahead and go into a little bit more length about what we have here now in Milton.
Well, thank you. I'm proud to be sitting here with our fire chief. Everybody in town certainly appreciates all of the safety protection we get from both our police department and our fire department. You would have been hard-pressed to know that if you toured any of our old fire station buildings, but the town has responded, and we are correcting that problem as we speak, as you all have witnessed. The irony, a couple of things I just wanted to point out. We actually held a ribbon-cutting ceremony, it was in June of 2022, for the new headquarters station. And we said at the time, and in fact, you know, both the Milton Times and the Patriot Ledger covered it pretty well, and we said at the time that we would probably finish this project within two years. That was our expectation. And I have to tell you, it was a little bit of a jump on our part because it's 2022. In 2020, COVID changed the world, especially for construction projects. The supply chains were completely dismantled, the costs were staggering. We changed our approach. We were actually going to bid all three fire stations at once, with the thinking that, you know, the volume of work, we'd get, you know, construction companies to sharpen their pencil and give us a really good bid. Well, we realized, and certainly with the help of our OPM, owner's project manager, and our architect, we realized that the state of the cost were just so crazy, and the fact that bidding the three stations would set that out for many years, it created more uncertainty for construction companies. So they'd have to guess more, and they're going to guess on the side to protect them and their profits. So yeah, we changed our approach. We said, well, let's get this first station, the headquarters, the one that really, there was never any doubt which one should be done first. And I'm just thrilled to sit here and tell you that we're going to be done within that two-year timeframe. I'm also, and I, with our town administrator Nicholas, who's anxiously awaiting for me to provide him final costs, and I'm anxious to give them to him. We fully expect that we're going to be, once we went out to bid for the headquarters fire station, we fully expect to be under the budget. And that's just terrific. We, you know, short on the deadline, under budget, and let me tell you, we built a beautiful building, safer. Firefighters across the country, certainly here in our state and our town, the number one problem they fight, face, health-wise, is cancer. And the reason predominantly for that is the facilities they live in. They don't separate the, when they get back in from a fire, the carcinogens they're wearing, et cetera. Well, you, the Select Board, got a little example tonight, and we hope to have an open day for the public to come in and tour. The safety facilities are just terrific, and we're very proud to have it done. And we've barely done that, and everyone wants to know, well, what's next, and when? And that's a fair question. Due to some really good foresight on the Select Board, at the time, a member named Tom Hurley saw, knew that we had to rebuild fire stations, and also knew that we had a large debt out there from rebuilding the six schools and also the Milton Public Library, both of which I think are just terrific buildings for what they provide. And knew that, well, look, if we know we're going to build fire stations at some point, rather than have a yo-yo of the declining debt from those big projects, let that keep going down, and then hit the residents with another big debt to get the fire station, he drafted a special article. We got a town meeting to pass it, the county residents to pass it, and the state legislature passed it, and the governor signed it. And so that's the funding mechanism. So the great news is, we're building these state-of-the-art fire stations, and Milton residents' taxes are not going up. And that's a powerful statement. The, our small downside is that the declining debt is not happening as quick as we would like it to build those stations. And so it looks like, by the way, the next station, we have two more to do, and for the public, we will get those both stations done. I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that when we need to go back and ask up for more help from the town, they'll respond appropriately, and I'm confident we'll get them done. But what needs to be done next is the East Milton Station. And there's a couple of significant reasons why that needs to be next. That station came online, oh, by the way, the headquarters station, little trivia, how old is the old headquarters station? Does anyone in the Select Board want to take a guess? For a number of years. I have both the year that the original was built and how many years it's been. I use my calculator.
I think we just heard when we were.
Oh, have you heard? Yeah.
Yeah, but you can go ahead and talk about it.
Well, so.
I would guess, I would guess somewhere between 1898 and 1905.
Well, you're close. It was 1878. Exactly. 146 years when we finally opened up the new station, and they move in and turn it over. And the chief will tell you an interesting story about a fire chief bragging down in Louisiana, was it?
South Carolina.
South Carolina, that they had the oldest fire station, and it was a year newer than ours. Anyway, yeah, it's 146 years old, and it looks every bit 146 years old, especially if you go in and tour on the inside. Anyway, so now we're thrilled we have that done. The next station, as I said, we'll tackle, is East Milton. And there's a couple of significant reasons. That came online in 1950. When it did, the expressway was not sunk. So the whole road structure around what what is now our East Milton Fire Station, Engine Two, was dramatically different. Today, two out of every three calls go to this side of, the Milton side of the expressway for that station. We looked at five years of data. Uh, some, some 75% of their coverage area is on the Milton side of the expressway. And if you can just all visualize, everyone is somewhat familiar with, uh, East Milton Square. And, um, when they come out of that engine, out of that station, they have to spend one minute to a minute and a half. And that's without a, a luggage, I mean, a traffic log jam, which now happens way too frequently down in East Milton Square, which everybody in town knows. They spend a minute to a minute and a half just to get over to the U.S. Post Office. In my dilapidated condition and, and age, I can probably still throw a rock from the post office over to the, to the East Milton Station. Folks, we can't lose a minute and a half when they're going to try to save somebody's life or save their house, right? And so that's reason number one, to get that station replaced now that we have purchased the property and can do it. Reason number two, uh, the station is, is having problems. We had to do an emergency repair. There's actually a basement below the bays of the East Milton Fire Station. They don't build fire stations like that anymore. And for lots of reasons, not the least of which, the East Milton Station is showing us it started to collapse. And we had to do an emergency repair. So there's no ambiguity which station we need to do next. We need to get, we need to fix East Milton for the safety of the residents in the East Milton District and, uh, certainly for the safety of the firefighters and anyone else that happens to be in the bay if it should ever, uh, have a problem. So when can we do it? The funding formula, uh, I've worked with your town administrator. It's been terrific to work with. Uh, we, we've got to get him the final numbers for the current headquarters station. We are gonna stay within the, what we budgeted. And then we have to get him the numbers for our design of, of the new East Milton Station. So we expect to have those within two months. Uh, and i- in a perfect world, we would love to start the East Milton Station in July. I'm not sure we can hit that. The next best thing is get it started during the summer, even if it's August, while the, while there aren't all those students in, in San Agos, as all those initial trucks roll up. Uh, but if we can't do it then, it looks like our funding formula, we, we, we will be able to start that in this fall. And it's, we're, since we're building a station now on a, a level, flat piece of land, uh, that's the quickest build. You don't have to tear anything down, the, the site's prepped. Uh, we haven't gotten the firmest of it, but I'm expecting it'll take us about a year, maybe a little longer than that, to finish that station. And then we'll be back to, to talk to you about Atherton Street, which we will do for anyone that's listening. All right, I'm going to stop now and allow the chief, who really knows what he's talking about, to talk to you.
Uh, yeah, I get the pleasure of.
Chief, if you could talk into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. After 100, I, I got the pleasure of after 146 years closing that firehouse. Um, so it's, it's been a long time coming. Um, when you look at the new firehouse, it's a beautiful building. Uh, the architect, it did a phenomenal job. And, and I, I give credit to Chief Larson, Chief Affenato and Chief Grant that started the process before me. It's been a long process to get to where we are. I get to open it up as the fire chief, but it really is the work from the, the, you know, the firefighters before me, the, the chiefs before me. And, uh, you know, the work from the select board, the work from Mr. Hurley, obviously the fire station building committee. We obviously picked the correct person to be chair of that committee. Uh, he's, he's taken it as a passion and we appreciate it. The firefighters, uh, appreciate it. Couple of things about the firehouse. Um, the, the, first and foremost, you're going to get a better firefighter out of that building. You're going to get a safer firefighter out of that building. Uh, the firefighters will, will, they'll be able to decontaminate themselves after a fire or any kind of call. Um, so, so the, the health and safety of the firefighters. There's a ton of windows over there. I believe that, you know, a lot of natural light will be also a benefit for the mental health of, of the firefighters, right? The stress is the number one, is one of the biggest, uh, you know, for public safety. Uh, so we need to make sure, how do we reduce the stress in our firefighters? And, and, you know, a little natural light. Uh, there's a phenomenal workout space there to make sure that they exercise on a regular basis. Uh, so we have that. The decontamination when we come in, um, that, that system is great where we have a hot zone in the, in the apparatus bay. And then you go into a warm zone where we decontaminate our equipment, decontaminate ourselves. And then we go into the, the, the admin space and the living space. And that is now the gr, the, the clean zone, the, the cold zone. And, and we can, it's a safer space. Um, you know, I was, I was on a meeting today with, with, uh, five fire chiefs and two of them both battling prostate cancer. So when you look at just the, you know, the history of cancer in the fire service, protecting our firefighters is, is, this, this new building will go so far into protecting our firefighters. Um, we talked about the new firehouse, the technology. We, we're a 1950s department where we would keep doing a lot of stuff on paper and pen. And, and, and just now the, the ability, the infrastructure in that new firehouse is tremendous and allows the technology and allows our firefighters to be better trained with that technology. We can, uh, the advancements, it just, you know, and, and thank goodness for these, these young firefighters that have the ability to, to, to operate these, these, these systems. And, you know, they, they're jumping in and they're helping out and making sure that we know how to use it and operate. And we're working very closely with the police department as well, with a new, uh, operating software, the Pro Phoenix that we, we, um, implemented, I think it was back in May. Uh, so now we have that software and that technology to help us better keep track of what we do and how we do it. And then, you know, then I go right back to the training. So the training, so we can train much better. We have the information at our hands and we can constantly train. And then there's some parts, and if you look at the back of the firehouse, there's a four-story tower and it has plenty of metal windows and we can throw ground ladders. And our firefighters will be prepared to throw the ground ladders as quickly and efficiently as possible. Uh, stretch hose lines, there's a hydrant there. We can stretch hose lines into the building. There's a space there we can really smoke up and, and put furniture in there and, and do, uh, search techniques and making sure our firefighters are, are practicing well-versed in their search techniques and, and wearing the, the proper protective equipment that we have. Um, so it just, the advancements of the fire, fire department here, it just, we just shot head 50, 60 years just opening this building. And, and I, I think you'll see it. I think you'll see it, uh, on the street. You're going to have a better trained, a safer and a better trained firefighter in the very near future, so.
Thank you, chief. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Walsh, and thank you for all your work on this. Um, before we move to, uh, comments and questions from the members, chief, uh, we had a, a fire, uh, event, uh, on Monday, I believe it was. And if you could give us an update on some of the heroic actions of the Milton Fire Department with respect to that incident?
Yeah, uh, it, it was a challenge. It was about seven o'clock in the morning, Monday. Uh, Martin Luther King, uh, passerby. And actually, I'll give that, that passerby a credit, all the credit in the world. Uh, they noticed the fire in the rear of the building. They actually, um, I've seen a video of them actually walking around the back of the building and saying, is there anybody in there? Is there anybody in there? And I believe from, I have not talked to that person, but apparently they went into the building and woke up the resident and got the resident out of it. Uh, they obviously called 911 at the time. Um, the resident was unsure if there was anybody else in the building. The first new engine company out of this firehouse, um, um, responded, was the first one on scene. We struck a box, we had two engines and a ladder, responded with the deputy chief. The first new company made it a really aggressive attack on the inside of the building. Um, there's some challenges anytime. It, it was really cold at, at that morning. Um, there were challenges with any type, you know, going to somebody else's house and you turn the lights out and say, hey, go find a, a bedroom or anything like that and, you know, good luck. And that's what they fought and they, they had to, um, the lieutenant that was on that line, you know, he, he's a well-seasoned, um, fire lieutenant, probably one of the best that we have. And he just said, chief, it was too hot. It was too smoky, we couldn't see anything. So they had to, you know, they made that valiant, valiant opportu, uh, push to get in there and try and search that building. And they searched most of the first floor. They weren't unable to get to the second floor. Um, and, you know, the deputy chief made that right call. They, we really couldn't push anymore. The fire had gone, gotten ahead of us. We backed everybody out and then, uh, they hit it for a while. It went to a second alarm. Uh, we had Canton and Randolph help us out at the scene. Boston covered, um, and they, I guess the entire time they were trying to break into the new firehouse so they could take a quick peek of the new firehouse. They covered the old firehouse. They wanted to cover the new firehouse, but it wasn't open yet. Um, so, and you just talk about, you know, the, the, the men and women of the Milton Fire Department. They did a phenomenal job to keep it where we are and, and, and perform a search in, in that building. And, and again, when I talk about the space, the training space, we'll have the ability to train on that and make sure that, you know. Uh, and, and again, the, the, the companies that worked that day. Um, I don't know, I, I, you know, I, I think everybody saw me on the news and they had the icicles hanging and everything else. So, um, the challenge is really, you know, weather is a challenge, but it really wasn't. The challenge was the fire itself. And every time the firefighters go out the door, they, they face those challenges. Going into a building that they're not used to, going into a, a situation that you have, it's just unpredictable. And, uh, the, the men and women of the Milton Fire Department really, I can't speak enough, I, I say it all the time to anybody, why'd you take this job? I took this job as the fire chief because of the men and women of Milton Fire Department, because I know I can count on them to do the job that we asked them to do. We asked them to do that, right? So, um, yeah, I can't, I can't thank them enough and, and they did a great job. Um, I will say that right now it's under investigation by, uh, we have a local, uh, we have a couple of members in our department that are a fire investigation unit. They're working with the, um, the state police and Milton police just to investigate the fire. So the cause right now is undetermined. And, uh, if there's anything to, you know, push forward, then I'll, we'll advise you, uh, myself or Chief King. So at this point, we're lucky that we know real injuries, a couple of minor injuries, couple slips, couple falls, you know, uh, smoke inhalation, that was a smoky fire. Uh, but the men and women did a phenomenal job of Milton Fire Department. And they do it every day and it's not even just on fires. It's the medicals, it's the car accidents, it's, it's whatever you have. I don't know if anybody was around today and I guess it was all over social media today that we, we did ice rescue training today. Uh, the, the men and women love getting out there and making a hole in the ice and, and practicing rescue and each other. And, uh, you know, they, they like doing, they like, they like to do that stuff. It's, it's, it's entertaining, you know? Um, and then you're prepared for when it happens.
Thank you, chief. Well, we are a grateful community for all of the work the men and women of the department do on our behalf and that we asked them to do. And so thank you for that. And please relay our thanks and the thanks of a grateful community. Uh, comments or questions from the members on this or the, or the prior issue that we discussed? Mrs. Mustard?
Thank you. Um, just want to reiterate, thank you for all that you do. Um, and this is a perfect example of the way that you work every day. I also wanted to, uh, say, I wonder if we knew who that person is that went in and rescued the, um, occupant. It would be nice to, like, give them some type of, some type of citation or something because, you know, for somebody to drive by and actually go in, um, something that's on fire and rescue somebody, that's a civilian doing that, I think should be recognized as well. Because they're not trained for that.
Exactly. And that's something that is definitely, I believe the person wants to remain anonymous. We have, we have talked to them, you know, and they provided some video of, of it. Um, so the last I heard, they wanted to remain anonymous uh, on that, that front. And if we did have the ability and they wanted to come forward, then we would definitely honor that and, you know. Uh, it, it's courageous, you know what I mean? Like, you know, we go in with the training and the equipment to go in there without that is, is definitely something that, you know.
So I think they should at least be recognized by us by verbally saying thank you to them as well if they're watching.
Okay, I don't believe they were resident Milton, but we.
But you know who it is, so.
Yes, yes.
Certainly just relay that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't sure if it was my mic making the noise earlier. Um, I just want to salute both of you for the, the work on this new fire station. I'm so excited, uh, to, to see it. Um, my, when, growing up, my dad was actually the, uh, the, the lawyer for the Firefighters Union in Toledo where, where I grew up. And so I got to spend a lot of time with firefighters as a kid, which is, which is fun. I'll just leave it at that. They're a fun group to hang out with when you're, when you're a teenage boy. Um, I just wanted to ask quickly to, um, you know, I, I've heard that there may be a, an open house or something like that for more folks in Milton to see inside. Just wanted to offer you the opportunity to say when that might be, if that's planned.
Yeah, I was going to say that right before I left.
Um, oh, sorry.
Uh, yeah, no, that's, that's perfect segue. Um, so Saturday between the hours of two to four, it's a soft open house. You know, we're not fully, we're, we're actually moving in January 30th on Tuesday, so Monday will be the last day. Uh, so we'll do a soft open house and anybody that wants to come in and take a tour of the firehouse, we'll have the opportunity to do it. Um, nothing really big planned with it, just an opportunity to open it up. And any resident wants to come in and, and visit the firehouse and take a look at it, we'll open it up. And there'll be some firefighters there to answer any questions and, and help out anyway. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, it's exciting. So we're looking forward to it.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Walsh?
I, the, the one group that I do want to thank who was so helpful to us in the beginning for one is the, of the neighbors of this neighborhood, the neighborhood of Justin Rens, the neighborhood organization. They were as active as anyone could, and they actually helped us a great deal when, when we had meetings over in East Milton. And, um, it's just going to be an amenity for this neighborhood as well, but they were really, they were great partners. Not as, not as, as high-profile as, as the building committee or the firefighters or those who weren't actually involved in the day-to-day. But, um, they were a great supporter of this, of this project. So I think it's very important that we recognize them as well.
They got great recognition.[1503.25]
They got great recognition.
They helped make this happen.
They were terrific to work with.
It's so hard to thank everybody from, from the select board to the warrant committee, to the fire station building committee, the space needs committee, to, you know, town meeting, to ultimately voting it. So, uh, we're, we're great, very appreciative. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Appreciate it. And, uh, we'll be here when you have more for us on the next station.
Thanks.
All right. All right. Item five and item six relate to the MBT Communities Act. I think we have a request.
Mr. Chair, yeah. I, I just, I think it might be helpful to inform the discussion about the letter from the Attorney General if we hear first from town council on the two-year ban. Cause I think, um, if, if the discussion about the Attorney General's letter is talk about what we might be able to do, I think the town council's opinion on what's possible would be important to know before we engage in that discussion. So there's no objection, I'd like to flip item six and, uh, item six and item five.
So without objection, we'll move up item six. No objection? All right. Mr. Mello, if you could, uh, Town Council Peter Mello, if you could join us. This is item six, uh, Town Council's opinion regarding application of two-year ban under generalized chapter 48, section five, with respect to special town meeting ballot question vote to be held on February 13, 2024. The select board received a memo, uh, from, uh, Mr. Mello about the application of the two-year ban. So, Mr. Mello, if you want to just give us a, a summary of that and see if we have any comments or questions from the members.
Sure, sure. It's a little bit of a tough act to follow, uh, on the agenda, but I'll, I'll do my best. So yeah, I guess the Reader's Digest version of it is that under the relevant provision of the zoning act, section five, there's language, um, that sets forth a, a two-year bar on the reconsideration of, um, a defeated zoning amendment. I'm paraphrasing obviously, but, um, absent planning board approval. So if, uh, town meeting rejects a zoning amendment or proposed zoning amendment article, um, that zoning amendment can't be brought back within two years of that vote, absent planning board approval or favorable recommendation in the planning board's report. So, obviously, um, we're dealing with kind of a new, a unique nuance here insofar as, um, the town meeting article that was acted upon at town meeting in December is now gonna be the subject of a, of a ballot vote. So it begs the question, would a ballot, a negative ballot vote constitute unfavorable action under the zoning act such that, um, the, the article would be, uh, precluded from being reconsidered within two years, absent planning board approval? Best I could tell, there's no explicit case law on the question. So as I probably described, uh, to this board and to others in the past, you've probably heard me out of the words that, um, you know, in, we're in the business of predicting outcomes and, um, you know, appraising risks and, and benefits and all that. And my best prediction of how a court would view this is that a court would, um, would be more likely, um, to, to reach the conclusion that a negative ballot vote would trigger the application of the two-year bar. It'd be more likely to reach that, uh, determination than the contrary determination. And I say that for a few reasons. First of all, I think that, um, just on its face, it would be a little incongruous to conclude otherwise. I mean, it, it would, what a negative ballot vote would result in would be, um, uh, you know, the effectuation of a final unfavorable outcome for the proposed article, which is basically the same impact that a town, a negative town meeting vote would have. Moreover, um, I think that, uh, the relevant language of the charter contemplates that this ballot vote is undertaken as part of a, uh, the phrase that the charter section uses is special town meeting. So I think a court probably would look at that and say, um, and I should jump back. The reason that phrase is relevant is that, um, and I'll just, I may as well quote from the relevant, uh, portion of the statute. It says, "No proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw which has been unfavorably acted upon by a city council or town meeting shall be considered by the city council or town meeting within two years after the date of such unfavorable action unless the adoption of such proposed ordinance or bylaws recommended in the final report of the planning board." So if you, um, assume for purposes of argument that the, the vote has to be, the negative vote has to be, um, the, undertaken by a, by a town meeting, well, under the relevant language of the charter, um, you know, that's what, the ballot vote is, is undertaken as part of a town meeting. If you read the, the explicit terms of the charter. So I think a court would look at that. I think it would, like I said, it would be sort of an incongruous or, you know, anomalous, uh, outcome to, to draw any distinction. I don't really, I don't think a court would recognize, um, you know, a policy rationale to distinguish between the two. So I think that the more likely outcome if a court were to consider this question is that, um, it would conclude that a negative ballot vote would, um, would constitute unfavorable action under section five of the zoning act such that, uh, the, the two-year bar would apply. So that, that's, um, that's a substance of my conclusion with respect to that question. Now, um, there's a nuance in, and I've described in the, I guess, the second or third paragraph of my memo, um, the footnote in the pen decision. I, I, this is probably more granular than we need to get unless you have questions, I'm happy to address it. But the court sort of poses the question whether, um, if a planning board has voted in the first instance to recommend the disapproval of a zoning article, whether that article upon defeat could be brought back within two years. In other words, whether the planning board could, the second time around, vote to approve the article that it voted, um, uh, or recommended with respect to which it recommended unfavorable action in the first instance. I mean, I guess from my perspective, were I to make that, if I were sitting as a judge and were called upon to address that question, I think, um, that, you know, the more reasonable conclusion is that a planning board could basically, upon some, you know, at a, given a second chance, could change its, uh, recommendation with respect to the article. But insofar as the court posed the question, I can't exclude the possibility that it could make a contrary determination. I mean, a court might conclude otherwise if the SJC posed the question, uh, without addressing it. And in that, in that case, it basically said, look, it wasn't briefed, um, so we're not gonna decide the question, uh, in this case. But, um, you know, to the extent it left that question open, um, the possibility exists that if, um, the, uh, the result of the, the forthcoming ballot vote were, um, were no, were to, to basically reverse town meeting's action, um, it's possible that a court could conclude that the planning board couldn't, um, within two years, basically approve the reconsideration of the same article.
Thank you, Mr. Mello. Comments, questions? Mr. Zoll?
I think I'm still Mr. Zoll. Thank you, Mr. Mello. Uh, so I just, just a couple of quick questions and I'm gonna reserve the right to come back and ask a few more. So the first question is probably the simplest, um, just for anybody who's watching. If the town votes yes on February 13th, is the town able to change the zoning laws that were passed, uh, at future town meetings? So they could refine or redraw the districts, uh, according to state law?
Yes, yeah. And town meeting can always amend a zoning bylaw.
Okay. So a yes vote doesn't mean that we're locked in stone for what we've, uh, done so far?
No, no.
Thank you. The second question, um, you know, I might, I might just hold it for there, Mr. Chair, actually, and let others ask questions. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mello, for this memo. I, um, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding the second part that you described accurately.
It's not, it's not an easy concept. And I know it's hard to articulate in a way that's user-friendly, so.
Yeah. And it's, yes. So, um, what I heard you say, and please correct me, cause now I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to repeat back what I think you're saying, is that if the planning board voted to approve the zoning bylaws that were put forth at town meeting, even after, right, see, I think I'm confused. So let's say on February 13th, they vote no.
Right.
But the planning board on February 18th voted yes to approve them. You're saying that those could not go to the state?
Right, okay, yeah, no, I, I appreciate the, the, the opportunity for a second crack.
Right, but it's confusing, not just for me, for other people in the public.
Thanks for a second crack at explaining this, cause I, as, as I was explaining it, I, I was confusing myself. So, um, here's, here's.
Half the people just changed the channel at home.
Okay, so here, here's the deal. If the, if there's a negative ballot vote, okay?
Yep.
In my view, I think a court, it's more likely that a court would say, okay, the two-year bar applies. So that means that basically article one, um, couldn't be brought back within two years, okay? Absent a planning, a favorable planning board recommendation down the road on article one. Now, it's, it could be academic, cause if, what's that?
So that means what you're saying, that they could vote yes in a year from now?
On article one. That, well, here's, here's the, the rub, okay? So if you would ask me that question two years ago, I would've said yes, unequivocally. I wouldn't have, you know, that categorically, yes, that's true. Because section five, that I just quoted the excerpt, says, it, at the same defeated provision can't be brought back within two years unless the planning board, uh, favorably recommends it in a, in a planning board report, okay? But what the court said in pen.
Right.
And I've quoted, I've actually, I just put the footnote in there. I know it's a, it's a verbose parenthetical and ordinarily I wouldn't do that, but I wanted you to be able to see all the words that, that, you know, the court used.
Yep.
The court basically said, well, if, I'm paraphrasing, but if the planning board voted the first time around, uh, unfavorably, basically, recommended that town meeting not adopt this amendment, then.
Which they did here in our town.
Which they did here in our town.
Okay.
Then if it's, if it's brought back within two years, the planning board can't reverse its original decision. The court posed the question.
Yep.
And I, the court mentioned the reply briefs. I actually went to the lengths of going, pulling up, um, the reply briefs that both parties filed. And they didn't seem, from my perspective, to be suggesting that a planning board couldn't change its mind on an article. But yet the court, you know, nonetheless, the court posed the question, okay? So I can't exclude the possibility that a court might say, no, no. Once a planning board decides in the first instance, you bring it back within two years, the, the law forecloses the planning board from changing it, its mind. Now, this obviously could be academic because, you know, you, if the planning board wouldn't, as a practical matter, be inclined to, to change its mind, and it, it's, it's just an academic argument. But, but pen does seem to, um, pose the question without deciding it and leaves open the possibility that a court might conclude that, no, once a planning board's decided first, that it's not gonna recommend an article. If it's brought back within two years, it can't change its mind. Now, kind of an important distinction I need to underscore here is that while you can't bring back the same article, you can bring back a different article. And that, that's, so that's the separate, that's what the issue I kinda deal with in the final, or the penultimate paragraph of the, of the letter. Which is, and pen addresses this.
Yep.
We conclude that proposed ordinance or bylaws are the same for purposes of section five, if, and here's the, kind of the, the salient, you know, phrase. If they share the same fundamental or essential character with little substantive difference. Now, there's very little case law construing that phrase, you know? So, um, I, I don't think we need to get into the weeds.
Nope.
Uh, for purposes of, of today's discussion. If we find ourselves in that situation, we're gonna have to work, you know, carefully and I would anticipate, you know, there would be some attempts to discuss this with HLC. How can we change this in a way that would suffice under section five, the zoning act, um, and still comply with the, you know, the law? That's, as I'm sitting here, it, it would be hard to kind of forecast that because that would be, you know, that would be a more, um, complicated discussion, I guess, in lack of a better word.
So if I could just follow up, I think, so I've been watching the planning board, um, for about the last year or so. And sometimes I catch them live and sometimes I don't. But at the last meeting on Thursday, there was reference to when you came before them on October 25th. And during that October 25th meeting, you had made a comment, and I think it has to do with this, if the planning board votes yes piece. Because what I am hearing them say is that there is an opportunity for us to bring this back within the two years. And the claim is, is that you said that during the October 25th meeting. I went back and looked at the October 25th meeting, you did not say that. It was, cause you're a lawyer and you don't actually say anything that's really concrete, I'm learning this. But, um, but you, you didn't say that. What I think you were referring to was this whole piece about, you know, if the planning board voted yes and what this would look like. So I just want it to be crystal clear for me, because now I understand the second piece of this that you were explaining. I just wanna be crystal clear on the beginning part of this memo. And that is, if the town votes no on February 13th, it is not likely that they will, we will be able to put anything forward until February 14th, 2026. Twenty-sixth, not sixth.
So I guess, um, my opinion is that, um, if the town votes no on February 13th, then it, basically, the two-year bar under section five would apply to article one so that.
That's what I was thinking.
Article one could not be brought back within two years, absent.
Without.
Planning board approval. And again, that begs, that, that'll trigger the question whether the planning board could change its mind. And that's, that's the question that pen kind of raises without addressing.
Right.
So I think that the only option at that point, only likely option, again, we're predicting, I'm predicting what a court would say. The only option at that point, I think, probably would be, um, that, uh, a new bylaw would need to be developed that would.
Oh, we'd have to pass a new bylaw.
Well, no, what I'm saying is.
A new article.
If you, a new article. If you wanted to bring back a new article, okay?
But it couldn't look anything like it just did.
Well, that's the question, where's, where does that line exist? Right. It would need, again, what, what pen says, and pen's really the, the only case to, to really substantively address this precise question, in my view, at least from what I could locate. It says, um, a, a article will be considered the same for purposes of section five.
Yep.
If they, if they share the same fundamental or essential character with little substantive difference, so.
So that's a big, yeah.
That's the question we're gonna have to address. And, and actually, I think the dearth of the case law on the question is reflected in the fact that pen itself was discussing, in discussing the standard, it was applying cases that dealt with a whole different section of the zoning act, section 16, which applies to the reconsideration of.
Okay.
Zoning decisions.
Okay.
Or decisions. So, um, so that, that's what I, if there were a negative ballot vote, I think a court would probably find that the two-year bar applies. And that it couldn't be brought back within two years. The same language couldn't be brought back or, or similar language couldn't be brought back within two years, absent a planning board vote, you know, possibly. Assuming that a court would say, yeah, the planning board can change its mind. So the, the trick would be, if you wanted to bring back an article that would, uh, in, in an attempt to achieve compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, you would need to formulate language that satisfies the requirements of the law and is different enough to suffice under that standard that pen, um, you know, described.
Yeah, that's gonna be a very thin rope to walk on that one, because.
Particularly with no state funding.
Right. So that's just, thank you for that, because that just seems like it would be almost impossible to write something that complies with the law, but that changes what we already did. So, so thank you, thank you for explaining this to me. Um, I'm sorry I asked so many questions about it, but.
No, no.
I appreciate your willingness to kind of rudimentary explain this to me.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to. And, uh, I know, you know, sometimes things get lost in translation and print and, you know, it's helpful to have an explanation, so.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Mustard?
Thank you. So I know that you've explained this a few times. My question is, what I'm hearing, just to sort of reiterate, if it's the same article, then no, it, it can't come back within two years. If it's the exact same thing and they change their mind. However, it sounds like if it's written differently on certain criteria, that that is a possibility. And it would have to be worked on, um, closely with you in terms of that. I did watch that same, um, planning board, uh, meeting and I believe the answer that you gave, I don't have the exact wording, so excuse me if I don't, but it almost sounded like there could be some kind of a possible go-around with this in terms of, you know, getting something right if need be on an article. So from what I'm hearing is.
I don't remember the, I can't remember.
That's not the exact word, so please don't quote me on that.
No, 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 I can't, I don't, candidly, I don't remember, um, as, as I'm sitting here, um, that discussion, I'd have to go back to it. But, you know, I, I will say that, um, you know, town meeting presented the opportunity, the occasion to, to really dive into a lot of the particulars of, of pen, for example, and to, um, undertake a more fulsome analysis of the, all of, all of the sort of, um, you know, permutations of all of this. So, you know, I don't know what was said, I, I'm pretty, I would be surprised if, um, I said anything that, well, I, I guess I'll just leave it at that. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't know what, this is the first I'm hearing of, of this point, so.
It wasn't, you know, exactly that wording, but it sounded like, you know, there is some option potentially, but you weren't committing to it, but, you know, there may be something. So I think it sounds like that may be a possibility, but it would have to be, as you said, very tight on, on what it was. But it sounds like it's not out of the realm. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's, again, I'll just quote the language. If the, what pen said, which is kind of the seminal case on the question, it says, "We conclude that proposed ordinance or, proposed ordinances or bylaws are the same for purposes of section five, if they share the same fundamental or essential character with little substantive difference." So, you know, we'd have to unpack that and figure out, um, you know, where the, at what point it's sufficiently different to, um, avoid application of the two-year bar. And as, like I said, as I'm sitting here, um, I'm not sure how, um, how precisely I could, uh, define that. Even pen itself, as I said, there's, there's a real paucity of case law on this question and, and that's reflected in pen's analysis, so. But I at least wanted to flag that, that issue.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Mr. Mrs. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll ask my second question now. So, uh, Mr. Mello, again, thank you very much. This is, there's a lot to unpack here. The thousands of hours and hundreds of thousands of dollars that went into the development of this, uh, of article one, um, to adhere to a, a variety in terms of placement, density, size of, uh, size of, of sub-districts, to comply with MBTA communities, including putting 50% of them in the transit corridor. In your estimation, is that, is there a way without radical revision to the, to those laws to, to, to create something that would be substantively different and still you adhere to the strict guidelines that the state has laid out and which we had spent a lot of time and money in, into putting a plan together for?
I, I'm not, I don't wanna be evasive, it's hard, it's a hard question to answer and you, you have to be mindful of the fact that, you know, I, we could be in a position of having to argue either way. So I, you know, I, um, I, you know, I need, like I said at the, at the beginning, a few minutes ago, I, I wanted to at least flag the, the point in this memo that, look, if, if we're in a position where we're subject to the two-year bar, um, and there's an attempt to formulate a zoning proposal that, um, is, is, um, sufficiently different to avoid application of the two-year bar, yet achieves, um, compliance with the law, I think that's gonna be, you know, that's gonna require more fulsome and, um, you know, uh, detailed analysis. That as I'm sitting here, I'm not really in a position to, I think, look, the, the phrase, and, and really all we're given, the only, the only clue, um, that we're given to solve the riddle is that if it shares the same fundamental or essential character with little substantive difference, it's not gonna, it's not gonna suffice. Again, where is the line? I don't know. I mean, insofar as it, it, the, the bylaw would be an attempt to achieve compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, I guess, does that? I guess, does that render it, you know, of the same fundamental or essential character? You know, so what, what does that mean? I think these are things we'd have to really, you know, evaluate and, you know, I think as a practical matter, we, I, if I were addressing that question, I'd look at every case that Penn cited and I'd peel apart every nuance of the case and every factual, you know, relevant factual detail that Penn mentioned and basically try to compare proposed modifications to what was being done in those cases. And that's, that's really the best, I guess, the best methodology we could, we could undertake to really, you know, as part of that exercise.
So legally, the town essentially has, has two choices, right? If we vote yes on the 13th, we can continue to modify the plan without rolling the dice or guessing how a judge is going to interpret something, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and trying to design something that's almost but not quite what we've just done. Or we can vote no and roll the dice and hope that we get a judge who's going to even allow us to try to address it. So to me, it seems to be a very clear choice of vote yes, and if you want to continue to modify and work on it, do that. I know there's plans already to work on the increase of affordable housing. Or no, and essentially roll the dice. I mean, I know lawyers don't like to say roll the dice, but it is a little bit of a, let's see what might work.
Yeah, I guess the, the two-year bar doesn't work in reverse, right? I mean, if you pass an article, it doesn't mean it can't be modified for two years.
Exactly.
If it's defeated, you know, again, under that, I won't belabor it, under the excerpt I quoted from, if it's defeated, it can't be brought back within two years unless certain conditions are met. But if it's, if it's passed, it can be modified.
That's the clear one, that's the clear answer.
Yeah, the two-year bar doesn't, doesn't apply to article, zoning articles that are not unfavorably acted upon.
Thank you. That's it from me, Mr. Chair.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Wells?
Just one point, Mr. Zoll's point that regardless of the vote, either way, a no vote or a yes vote, the town or proponents could continue to work on a modified plan, correct? Especially if it has planning board approval. There's nothing to stop anybody, regardless of the vote, to continue to work on this.
No, exactly. You, if, if you're, if the town is subject to the two-year bar with respect to Article 1, yeah, the possibility would still exist to, to craft a new bylaw that's sufficiently different from Article 1 to circumvent the application or avoid the application of, of the two-year bar.
I mean, I've listened to both sides. And I'm not on either, but as someone who is sitting here, listening independently, I don't hear anybody, including the no people, are saying, no, go away. I don't hear them saying that. I hear, I don't hear anyone saying, vote no and don't work on this. I don't think there's anybody who's saying to, although I did, I've heard people say that there is a small group that says that. I've not been approached by them, I don't know who they are. But even those that I know that are working on the no vote, are not working on the no vote to just say, stop, we're not doing this. They're working on the no vote because of how they view it, to include issues of affordable housing, things of that nature. So my, my point is, it's a, I talked more than I wanted to. My point is regardless of the vote, the effort could continue towards getting us approved.
Yeah, no, that
Especially if you have planning board approval.
If it's, if it's a different, if, now, what would happen in the interim, I guess, is the, probably segues into the, the other agenda item, but, you know, I don't, we, in that, I think in that state of affairs, the town would lack a compliant zoning bylaw. So what, what the state would do in terms of enforcement is a separate question, but yes, if
Right, and I'm not even going there. I'm not even, that's what the question I asked.
But if there's a, if there's a, if the, if the question's defeated or if the proposed article was, if Article 1 is defeated at the ballot in connection with the ballot election, and notwithstanding any application of the two-year bar, it wouldn't preclude the development of a new attempt to comply with the MBTA zoning act.
That's what I was saying.
Is, to formulate language that would seek compliance, yet be sufficiently different not to be subject to the two-year bar. Again, that, where that line is, is difficult to predict and, you know
I'm not asking you to do that.
Yeah, I don't know.
You've answered what I wanted.
And whether it's plausible to achieve compliance and make it sufficiently different, I guess I'm not in a position really to offer an opinion on that, but, but yeah, theoretically.
In the words of your, in the words of your illustrious long-term deceased partner, my longtime friend, Michael Hain, the only way to make case law, the only way to test case law, make case law is to test case law.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Bradley?
Mr. Mellow, does this strip of land that's owned by the state currently over by the expressway, so it's got the salt fields, salt in it, it's got, it's a park and ride, it's, you know, it's owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Right now, does, let's say the town votes no, we are not in compliance, is there anything stopping the state from just saying, this is our land, we will now build upon it what we see as fit?
Well, I guess I don't, you mean, like, in, I guess I see the two as unrelated unless I'm missing something. I mean, I, unless, you know, basically this, if
No, because if we pass this, then there's going to be zoning in place that says how big the setbacks are, how high the buildings can go. Right now, there's none of that. So if this passes, there will be all these restrictions on what they can actually do with that land.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So if we don't pass it, then they could immediately start building on that land, whatever they wanted to, correct? Within our current zoning, I mean, I just
Let's let Mr. Mellow
I don't think he can answer that question, but
Why?
Well
Because there's so many options.
So, so let me, let me suggest, I think the, I think the question is, does the town's zoning apply to state-owned land?
Oh, I see.
I think that's the question. And so, and so the question, so you can answer the question, Mr. Mellow.
Oh, okay. Does it apply to, that, that question, it can be a little nuanced. I'm, I'm reluctant to, you know, I just want to, I'm trying to, I don't want to give incorrect advice as I'm sitting here. I'd, I'd want to take a look at, it's, it's been a while since I addressed that precise question. I have in the past, I just, I want to get my bearings with whatever, whatever the analysis was then before I, before I say, you know, opine definitively, I guess.
Fair enough, and that's a little far, a little far field from our agenda item anyway, so it's not, not something that you're ever to be careful. Mr. Wells?
So just a historic point, which predates, I believe, everyone at this table, including. So about 15 years ago, no, about 15 years ago, we went through this exercise with the state. The state, do you remember, do you recall this? The state was going to sell it to us for a dollar. And that was to go, to include the park and ride lot, the DPW operations lot, and the only thing that they were going to retain was the salt shed, which is, which is the northern, northernmost point of Granite Avenue, closer to the Royce Smith Bridge. And in that exercise that the board and the executive secretary, the town administrator and the planning went through at the time was, they let the town formulate a committee to decide what should go there. They, they had some ideas. At the time, State Street was very, very involved in North Quincy, developed like real estate infrastructure, they had a lot of, they were the primary tenant, what is Two Granite Ave now. They had talks about building a sister building. They actually developed a sister building to Two Granite Ave that was going to go there. But in the end, there was just so much, it just dragged, it went on and on. The neighbors didn't want it. I think the proposal at the end from the study committee was to put like an extra space storage and when the state saw that, they withdrew their, the offer to the town and they put it back into the state's inventory. So that's just to give you a little historic that how close, we came this close 15 years ago to having that, most of that, not the legion property, but most of the state-owned property to include the park and ride lot in the DPW operations building. So I just want to give you a little bit of
Other comments or questions?
I think, I think it's, I think not in most cases, but I, again, I want to go back to
You think not in terms of the, in terms of the town's only applying to, to state-owned property?
Right, right, but I'd have to go back to, I don't want to say any, you know, say that conclusively without going back and checking that analysis, so.
Anything else on item six? All right, so, Mr. Mellow, if you'll stay here, we'll go back to item five, which is, we alluded to this before, what could happen in the interim. This is discussion January 16, 2024, a letter from Attorney, from Attorney General Campbell to the town of Milton concerning the town's compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. And maybe if, if Mr. Mellow, you want to give a quick, your quick analysis of what the town has received from the Attorney General?
Sure, I'm happy to. And I guess if, if I were to boil this down to a, to a soundbite, I would say it's, to me, it's a diplomatic thread of legal action. It basically just, you know, recognizes sort of the procedural or factual genesis or developments that have led to where we are now and reminds the town of the AG's position that compliance with the law is mandatory and that, you know, basically forecasts that, that the state would, would pursue, if necessary, enforcement action. It includes, it said, for example, it, oh, and I've highlighted a couple of relevant excerpts. It says, "The law is crystal clear as to whether municipalities must comply. They must, as a matter of state law, compliance with the act is not optional. My office will not hesitate to compel compliance with the MBTA Communities Act through legal action if necessary." And then the AG concludes her letter with a request that the town undertake to preserve potentially relevant records. Call that a litigation hold notice or a document preservation notice. It's, it's pretty common in litigation where you advise, caution the other party, or even internally, when you represent a party, you want to advise your client of the need to preserve all potentially relevant electronic and other records. So I'm happy to address any questions.
I don't know if you were finished. And just, Mr. Mellow, before we go to questions, the, the notice to preserve all records, could you elaborate on the extent of that and what that, what the obligation? What obligation to the town and its officials, employees, and agents that will, that will, that will bring?
Sure, so what the letter asks specifically is the town, including its officials, employees, and agents, preserve all records related to the town's consideration of multifamily zoning generally in the MBTA Communities Act in particular, so that a complete record is available to the Attorney General's office and a court if, and to the extent that enforcement action is necessary. So that would include, from my perspective, all forms of communications, which, you know, obviously in today's day and age are ubiquitous, you know, electronic email, text messages, you know, online postings and the like that were exchanged, received, or sent by or to or from any town board member, a town official, or town employee. So it's, it's pretty expansive and, and I have prepared a preservation notice for the town's use to, you know, underscore and to identify and describe the types of information that needs to be preserved and so that people are aware of that, but it's
And does that, Mr. Mellow, include for officials, employees, and agents, personal information, personal communications as well? Is it, is it broader than the public, public records?
Yeah, yes, in my, in my view, yes. If, you know, the transmission of, of information via some private device or account doesn't insulate it from, you know, disclosure in a litigation if it pertains to the subject matter of the litigation or if it's potentially relevant to an issue in the case. You can't, you know, insulate a communication from disclosure or production simply by transmitting it through some private device or account.
So all officials, employees, and agents will have to preserve both public communications and private communications with respect to?
Yes, exactly. So for example, if, if a town official or board member, you know, exchange, whether they exchange the message on a town-issued email account, for example, or through a private email account, or with, on a private device, if it's relevant to the subject matter of the litigation or potentially relevant, then I think it's, it needs to be preserved.
And what are the remedies if, if these communications aren't preserved?
So the, the legal doctrines call spoliation and it's, there are a range of remedies that courts have recognized for, you know, running afoul of the need to preserve evidence. It could, it could include sanctions. It could include the, the finding of an, of an adverse inference against a party in a case. You know, if you can't produce, if you've destroyed, for example, information that you had that would have been relevant to this issue, the court's going to draw an adverse inference against you with respect to that issue. Depending on the circumstances and especially egregious circumstances, you know, the range of remedies could get more serious. Attorney's fees and even potentially, you know, a judgment in an extreme case. So it's pretty, a court wields pretty broad latitude to impose different sorts of adverse outcomes as a disincentivizer against, you know, the preservation of potentially relevant information.
Thank you, Ms. Mellow. Comments or questions from members? Ms. Bradley?
So just so we're clear, anything from your phone, your personal phone, for any official that I'm texting to anybody in town about MBTA communities, that is something I have to preserve?
I think that's a fair interpretation.
Great, and if I, and if I delete it, I believe at least a few years ago, I knew that the Attorney General's Forensics Department were able to find a lot of deleted things from phones in a case that came out regarding the Senate President, that at the time, Senate President's husband. So I know that their forensic department is pretty good at finding things that are, have been deleted on the phone. And so that would be something that we would be subject to, correct?
Well, I
If somebody, if
Theoretically, I mean, I, it, look, if, I guess it would depend on the circumstances, the extent to which the, you know, the Attorney General or any party for that matter might pursue, you know, records and, you know, it's a little, it's a, it's kind of a hard question to answer, you know, in the abstract. If you, depending on the circumstances, if they were egregious enough and the conditions were, you know, sufficed, I could, I could imagine that, you know, someone, a party in litigation would attempt to retrieve, you know, from devices information that they, they suspected might have been inappropriately, you know, destroyed.
Perfect. And does this also extend to our town meeting members or no?
I would, in abundance of caution, I would, I would say yes. I mean
I was not expecting that, so, okay.
So that notice, just to interrupt, that notice that you have for employees and officials, that should go to town meeting members as well?
Yeah, that, I think that makes sense. Now, look, I mean, she
Because they're elected.
They're elected, yeah.
That's why.
Right, so the, the AG's reference to this is, is pretty broadly framed. I, you know, obviously I quoted from it a minute ago. But yeah, I think that, you know, officials, employees, and agents, I think that's a, that's a pretty broad, you know, kind of all-encompassing characterization, so.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
So let me get this right, because you just, you just went down
So let me get this right, because you just, you just went down, I'm in this field a long time, and you, you just went down a very slippery slope, my friend, so like, I'm very familiar with this. You're telling me, did you just say to the board that you can't share a text or a comment to any thoughts about this? No, okay.
No, no, what I'm saying is, what, the doctrine of spoliation.
Right, so like, what you just brought up, so like, I'm, I'm just thinking on the top of my head, it's like, there's an organized group at town meeting that texts regularly about issues.
So all of that could be subpoenaed?
I don't think they're aware of that.
That's what I'm trying to say, that's why I'm trying to say this in public.
Yeah, let's try to keep this, let's try to keep this orderly, so.
I'm not being, I'm just, I don't.
No, 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 absolutely, no, absolutely.
Listen where you're going, son of a gun.
So, so I, I think the idea is, I think the idea is, town council is going to send out a notice for town officials and employees to preserve all their communications, and that will include town meeting members and all elected officials and all employees as well, and agents. I think that's what the advice that we're getting, and town council has a notice that we need to, will need to distribute quite extensively.
When are we distributing this?
I think we'll, I think we'll find out from, from Mr. Milano.
Peter has prepared it, it's, it's ready, so we'll, we'll get, start getting that out tomorrow. I did have a question, if I could, on this.
Yeah, Mr. Milano, please.
Peter, we haven't discussed this, but it references consideration of multifamily zoning generally. Obviously, the town has had, this predates MBTA Communities discussion, goes on through the MBTA Communities discussion, but it's kind of separate matter. Is there a timeline we should be going backwards on? Because, you know, there are 40B conversations that had happened in recent years, lawsuits related to that, and actions, particularly at the Board of Appeals around 40B projects. So is there anything we should advise in terms of a timeline backwards?
That's an excellent question. Look, I guess, I, I like to tread carefully, it's just my, my kind of philosophy nature, however you want to describe it, with respect to issues like this. I'm certainly going to be more inclined to err on the side of caution and advise people to preserve information than I am to say, no, that's fine, get rid of it. So, you know, with that sort of as the preface, I, I would err on the side of caution and if, if there's, you know, however far back it goes, if it's potentially relevant to, to one of, one of the issues referenced in the letter, then I think the safer course is to, to, you know, preserve it. And, and, you know, this is something that it may make sense to, to clarify perhaps with the, if, if, I'm happy to reach out to someone at the AG's office to, if, if this feels like it's something that could become too unwieldy, or, or, you know, the subject of, you know, undue angst, then, then I'm, I'm happy to reach out to the AG and get clarification on what, you know, the scope of, in their view, the scope of our obligations in this regard. But I, I think that my, my instinct, and this isn't just in this case, I mean, in litigation generally, this is pretty routine, and I always caution clients to, to take pains to preserve anything that might be potentially relevant in discovery or in the case, really to any issue in the case. Sometimes that's hard to predict, so.
And the letter certainly references enforcement of state and federal fair housing laws, so presumably, the desire would be to, to, the desire could be to develop evidence that goes far, goes much before last December.
Right, and, and, again, I don't want to get too far afield, but in those types of cases, those types of claims involve a lot of, typically a lot of allegations about, you know, communications, things that were said in communications, and they, you know, tend to rely on electronic exchanges, you know, like emails, and because that's sort of the, a lot of times the, for lack of a better word, the fodder from which a lot of the, the legal arguments are drawn, you know, in, you know, cases involving those types of claims, so.
To show intent.
Right.
Other comments, Mr. Zoll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, you wanted to ask, please, go ahead.
I just, real quick clarifying, in regards to what Mr. Milano just asked you, would you say that a good starting point would be when the Commonwealth passed the law? Like, that would probably be the start of when, like, we wouldn't need to go back 20 years before then. Oh, you don't know? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Well, it's so that.
I didn't know, I was asking a question.
Town's consideration, preserve all records related to the town's consideration of multifamily zoning generally.
Oh.
And the MBTA Communities Act in particular.
Oh, so it's anything?
Yeah, the law isn't specific just to MBTA.
It could go back.
So it could go back, okay, I'm happy I asked.
That's why I said, when you say, like, I mean, you're talking dump like phones, subpoenas, records, I mean, that, that's a lot of stuff.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
That's fine, no, no, thank you for the clarification, I think that's helpful. So when, this question was posed a couple of months ago, and I think that maybe this, probably it's more urgent and real now, but if, if an elected official or a town employee, if, if there's a negative vote, I'm assuming that there's a positive vote, this is probably going away.
Well, if.
That's, I guess, maybe the first question, if, if it's a yes vote on one, on the, on February 13th.
Right, if it's, if it's a yes vote, then the, then Article One carries, it becomes effective, and then it would be a process through which HLC would make a determination about whether it's compliant with the act.
So assuming that it's compliant, which we've been, suggested it has been, okay. So if there's a negative vote, and it turns out that a town official or a town employee was texting or emailing in a way that suggested a deliberate subversion of state law or exclusionary, promotion of exclusionary zoning, and this state, you know, goes through this process, finds the communication, and decides to either sue the town or sue the individual, would the individual elected official be responsible for their own counsel, or is that something that the town is going to have to provide?
That comes up in cases like that, and it, it sort of depends on the nature of the claims and the allegations in the claims, and, you know, that, that's, I'm not sure there's a one-size-fits-all answer to that question. You know, and I, I will say it's a little perilous, I don't want to overstate it, but I'm trying to be mindful of the fact that we could be in a position where we're in a litigation, you know, and I don't want, I don't want to get too far afield in this conversation and, and basically provide, you know, you know, make comments that might be unhelpful to the town in a future litigation. I obviously owe fidelity to the town to protect its best interests, and so it's, there's a lot, it's, yeah, there's, there are risks associated with, you know, predicting what might happen in a future litigation, I'm just trying to be mindful of that, so.
Mr., well, Mr. Milano?
I was just going to add that the town does carry professional officials, professional liability insurance for public officials, and so there is an insurance provision that we do carry that would be separate from any legal services that Murphy has, he does provide.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Musto?
Thank you. I was rereading some portions of the letter that she had sent forward, and it also says that the AG's office stands ready to work with any municipality that seeks to meet its legal responsibilities, our strong preferences for cooperation and collaboration than the bounds of the law. So my question would be, if this, if it ends up with a no vote, could we go back to the AG and try to work with her, you know, and make a good faith effort in complying? Because I think, you know, it's not so either/or. I think there can be a happy medium, and it sounds like, you know, we, we have an obligation to hear what the voters say, and we don't know which way it's going to come up, but if it comes up with a no vote, then I would hope that we could go back to the AG and work with her and her office in doing so. I mean, unfortunately, as I've said all along, we are, we are misclassified. I think that's the, a big crux of this whole thing. I don't think that we're a ferry terminal, a subway station, a bus station, we have a trolley, and at the end of the day, trolley stops, I don't believe are subway stations. And so I think that, you know, there's a lot of things that have been said, one thing is about what we will miss out on, legislature voted for three consequences of grant funds that we cannot apply for, and they added a fourth. I am not certain that the additional ones that were added, I'm not sure of the legality of that at this point. However, I think that we should try to, no matter what the outcome is, to try to work together and get something accomplished that's positive in this whole aspect of everything. And I would hope that, that we could do that as a town and work together, and, you know, if it gets passed, it gets passed, if it doesn't, then I would hope that we would go to the AG's office and work with them on doing something that meets what we really should be classified as. And we'll see what people say on it, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure you posed the question, but it's, and I may have said it, but it, it's difficult to predict what the AG's, what the AG would do. I think the, the fact, just the fact alone of the letter is, in and of itself, I think, noteworthy. I think the message is that certainly the, the AG has forecasted that it will proceed with enforcement if, if it needs to, and I think one relevant factor is that there are a lot of other municipalities, obviously, in the state that are kind of watching what happens here, and that may impact the AG's thinking, you know, for obvious reasons, you know, if it, 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 there may be a greater inclination to take enforcement action if you think that that's going to be necessary to prevent others from running afoul of the law, so, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to, you know, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell you what the AG's office is going to do, only, only they can tell you that, but I think that if there's a no vote, and if we're in a position where we're subject to the two-year bar, and there's no, and there's some uncertainty about when or if compliance will be achieved, and, you know, there's a perception that, that this, this law is not going to be perceived to have a lot of teeth unless they pursue enforcement against, you know, communities that haven't complied, you know, that would militate in favor of an enforcement action, obviously. So those are, those are issues that the AG would have to address, so.
And it is pretty clear in the last sentence, where the Attorney General says, "Should the town chart a course in contravention of state law? However, the Attorney General's office will carry out its responsibility to enforce the law without hesitation." So, Mr. Milano, perhaps the letter from the Attorney General referenced Milton's eligibility for a wide variety, wide variety of state funding that would be impacted if the town rejects compliance with the MBTA Communities Act? Do we have a sense, or could we develop a sense of what, what that state funding could consist of?
Yes, this has been a recurring question throughout this process in terms of what is on, what is at risk for Milton, both in terms of those grant programs delineated in the guidelines and any other potential funding sources that the town frequently uses. So we've been looking at this question, I can prepare a list and, and share that with the board. I, I think it's important to think about the grant monies in kind of three boxes, the grant monies that are identified in the guidelines, that are very clear from the Secretary Augustus' letter, that, you know, the town could certainly is welcome to apply for any of those grants if it's noncompliant, but you shouldn't expect to be successful in those applications. There's the statutory money that we receive that are funded to the town because of provisions in state law, I think Chapter 90, Chapter 70, those I can't see being impacted one way or the other because it's, they're set out in law. But there is a third bucket of grants, which are broadly administered by the executive offices of, of the Commonwealth, whether it's housing livable communities, whether it's economic development. DCR administers a lot of grants, Energy and Environmental Affairs administers a lot of grants from green communities to municipal vulnerability, and those are discretionary, and they're competitive applications. So the question there will be, does the governor's office put penalties on noncompliant communities? Is there some ranking system for communities that are noncompliant, and how would that affect grants? Still an open question, but those are the kinds of grants that the town does receive frequently. I think when we pulled the list, it was one and a half million dollars over the last three to four years of these kind of quote-unquote discretionary grants that aren't mentioned in the guidelines but are controlled by the executive secretaries that report to the governor. And what you'll see is, the governor's office will, you know, direct those grant programs to meet their policy objectives, and we all know that the governor is very interested in housing. So I can prepare a list and, and follow up with HLC to see if they share any guidance on those discretionary grants more broadly. We are slated, knock on wood, to potentially receive some good news on Thursday about a grant through the Seaport Economic Council, so we'll see what, if anything, they attach to that one, and also I'm going to let the board know of that. One thing that did come up yesterday that is worth sharing is that the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, when they evaluate projects, they are including an MBTA Communities compliance question, and projects that are in communities that are not compliant with MBTA Communities will receive a five-point deduction. That was news to us, and that came out yesterday. So think about, the projects that typically go through the TIP are, are larger transportation projects, the Decan East Milton was a TIP project, the Adams and Squonham Street intersection project that we're working on now is funded through the TIP. So in the future, those projects will be subject to this question about the MBTA Communities compliance and, and up to a five-point deduction. It's, those projects are graded on a hundred-point scale, so it's a 5% hit, but these projects are generally clustered together on scoring, so it might not tip the scales, it very well could, and so those are the two past projects, additional projects coming down the line on the TIP could be impacted in the future. So that's just from the conversations I've been having and the research we've been doing, and we'll follow up, and I can put something in writing to the board, just to kind of lay all this out.
What are the other areas of discretionary grants besides the transportation, if you know what the?
Yeah, so I think Complete Streets Program is one, that's, that's administered through MassDOT, the town received close to $300,000 through that for redoing the intersection at the middle school. The, what else is under that? Yeah, Department of Public Health, DCR. We've received stormwater grants through, through the state, through MassDEP, that could be subject to potential changes. I don't have a full list, what else is out there? We received MassTrails funding, again, through DCR to do work on the Napanzit rail trail. We received various grants throughout this whole process, actually, one of the big ones that I'm thinking about is Community Compact, so that's a program typically run out of Lieutenant Governor's Office. We received $100,000 for that when I first started, and another $70,000, and that was what paid for the website, $50,000 for our climate action plan, $50,000 for, like, Complete Streets devices, like radar signs, and other equipment that the Department of Public Works would use to put in Complete Street stuff. So these are all grants that are administered by the governor's office that the town has received. We've received some grants for safer schools, security grants for schools, as well as HVAC improvements that went over to the schools. I don't quite know exactly those programs, but those would strike me of more on the competitive application scale where they are discretionary.
Okay, so, so, so if Mr. Milano, if you could develop that list, I think it'd be Okay, so, so if Mr. Milano, if you could develop that list, I think it'd be important to know what the potential, what the potential hit to state funding will be. Ms. Mustard.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Mello. I'd like to know legally, can the Attorney General go beyond the four grants that were voted, the three, the three grant programs, and then they added a fourth one, the legislature, as a penalty? Can they add additional penalties? Or can EOHLC, you know, meaning that we can't get these other grants? Or is that beyond the scope and discrimination? Because legislature didn't, they voted on the penalty, if you don't do this, you are ineligible for these three grants, and then they added a fourth one. But now it seems like they've added a lot of different ones on, but the legislature didn't vote on those. That was not, so you were told what the penalties were, and now they've added more. So I'd like to know legally, can they do that? Or is that overreach in discrimination? And then, I guess the other point I would make is, again, we don't know which way it's going to go, but once we are in compliance, I assume everything would resume back to ability to get everything grant-wise. So two different questions.
Right, so the, the second question first. Well, with respect to the first question, I, I don't think the remedies are necessarily confined to, you know, the explicit language of the statute. And, you know, obviously, there are guidelines. The Governor has, has seemingly, you know, has spoken to that. And I don't, I don't have the transcript of her comments in front of me. I'd like to look at that and kind of evaluate what, what she said in this regard, and, and perhaps that, or better understand the basis for it and what specifically she was referring to. But the, the second question is, I had the same thought, actually. If theoretically, if, if the town or any town were deemed to be out of compliance at a given moment in time, could it still be penalized down the road after it achieved compliance for its prior noncompliance? I don't know. I guess, look, this is new, it's a, it's an evolving thing. My sense is that, you know, that probably the enforcement action would be taken with respect to, you know, existing noncompliance, and, you know, hopefully, if, if compliance were later achieved, any, you know, future enforcement would be, would be rendered, you know, moot. But I, I'm not sure. It's an, it's an interesting, it's an interesting question. But I think, yeah, if, if there were compliance down the road, then, then the town would be insulated from future enforcement proceedings, presumably. But that wouldn't, for, you know, if, if there's an existing or an existence of, of noncompliance, I think that there's a serious risk, from my perspective, that the AG would, would pursue enforcement against the town.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Mustard.
Thank you. I'm wondering if Mr. Milano, the three particular grants in that fourth one that are mentioned in the statute that were voted on, I'm sorry, by the legislature, can you please give us, when you're doing this, the breakdown of what those numbers were? And then, are you able to give us at the, maybe at a next meeting, the legal opinion on whether those other ones would be the same, would be subject to not being able to get those as well because of, or is it overreach because they weren't voted on by the legislature? I just want to make sure that we have all the things covered either way, no matter how everything goes. We just want to make sure we know.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to address any question.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Fair to say, Mr. Mello, the key word in the Governor's grants is discretionary?
Yeah, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Can I ask another question?
Ms. Brad.
Thank you. And Mr. Milano and Mr. Mello, have you ever seen the Governor line item veto things that were specific to cities and towns that they were counting on?
Right. So, so the point is that...
Governor, right now, it's called line secrets.
I understand that. I wish you could only do that with the executive office.
Insofar as the award of a grant is discretionary, or when it's discretionary, can be denied on any basis.
Correct.
So, even if it's not explicitly tied to noncompliance with the act...
Right.
You know, as a practical matter, if it's discretionary, then it doesn't need to be tied to the act. You know, someone, the, the person charged with making the decision about whether to make that discretionary award can decide not to make it on the basis of, of noncompliance, even if the act doesn't explicitly tie the two together. I, I think that's the, the point.
Yeah, and I would, I wouldn't necessarily have gone down this road of expecting these discretionary grants to be impacted, because we haven't necessarily heard that from HLC. But in discussions with them, they've said, "Look, these grants are discretionary, and they can be directed to meet the policy preferences of the Governor's Office." And the other element is seeing what is going on with TIP projects, I think, is something we might see. It might not be Milton, or XYZ community is noncompliant, therefore not eligible to apply for this grant. All communities would remain eligible, but XYZ noncompliant community might be deducted X points, which results in that dropping to the bottom of the list rather than rising to the top of the list, which is what is going on with the TIP projects. Any projects can be submitted. They'll all go through the same evaluation process. Projects might be ranked more penalized for noncompliance, I think is a likely potential outcome here on these discretionary grants, but we'll, we'll chase that down.
Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For anybody who's watching at home and scratching their head and wondering, well, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars are we willing to give up to throw spaghetti at the wall and hope that we can come up with a plan that the Attorney General, who explicitly says, "An MBTA community such as Milton shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right," and goes on to say, "But the law is crystal clear as to whether municipalities must comply. They must." That is not the language of compromise. There are sometimes with the law, no, yes, or no. You were speeding, you weren't speeding. You committed a crime, you didn't commit a crime. You followed the law, you didn't follow the law. If you're watching at home and you're scratching your head and you're wondering, it seems very clear that we have the opportunity to vote yes, continue to work on this per our general counsel, continue to refine, or we can vote no and roll the dice on how much money we're going to lose, how many lawsuits we're going to be subjected to, how many, how many elected officials may find themselves under investigation for potentially circumventing fair housing laws. To me, it seems like a very clear and obvious choice. There, there is not any space in this letter. The Attorney General can't send us a letter that says, "Vote for this, or we will sue you." But essentially, she has said that, and because she is right. The town has an obligation to follow laws. We are a nation of laws. Our founding fathers would be so thrilled to know that if you live in Milton, Massachusetts, in 2024, you can elect your town meeting official, you can elect your select board, you can elect your planning board, you can elect your town representative, you can elect your, you can elect your state representative, your state senator, your governor, your Attorney General. All of those are elected. The Attorney General's letter states, when the House and Senate voted on this, the State Senate adopted the law unanimously, the House adopted it by a vote of 143 to 4, such that the cumulative legislative vote was 183 to 4. Then Governor Charles D. Baker, I'm using his full name because that's how it says in the letter, signed the act into law. So, this is not, this is not a wild violation. I, I think if people are that concerned about it, what they should be concerned about is that there are people in town who are willing to put the town at risk of lawsuits, of loss of revenue, and all to accomplish probably nothing. Because guess what the Attorney General is going to do? She's going to come in and she's going to impose zoning, whether it's through the courts, whether it's through developers. We're going to be in the same place that we were without town input and without town guidance. And to me, it's, it's, it's very clear. And I understand that change is really difficult. It's so hard. It's very difficult. I, the town, I've mentioned Toledo, Ohio, where I grew up before. If you don't want traffic and you want a house that costs $100,000, the house that I grew up in right now, I just looked at it on Zillow before the meeting, $114,000 you can get a three-bedroom house in Toledo, Ohio. And I guarantee you, you're not going to have traffic problems. The reason is because Toledo is a town that does not have a great industry, does not have great higher educational institutions, does not have the industrial base that we have here in, in Boston, Massachusetts, which we are so lucky to have. We have a responsibility to not just the current generations, but to the future generations of this town. And if we're seriously ready to start putting state funding at risk, to start subjecting ourselves to lawsuits, to end up in the same place that we were right now, then, you know, we will, we, that's what, that's what we'll do, if that's what the town wants to do. But to me, through our questions with the, with, with Mr. Mello, who I'm so appreciative for his time tonight, it's so clear that there, that the choice of voting yes allows us to continue to tweak, continue to refine. The choice of voting no subjects us to all of these penalties. And I will just conclude by saying, we have yet to see any alternative plan. We, the development of this plan was done with state funding. It was done with state, with, with, with state software and state, state consultants. And you can guarantee that that's not going to be available if we decide to throw this whole thing out and start over again. So we're not only talking about the loss of town funding there, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of planning that we don't need to do because we've already done it. We've already done it. So, again, I'm sorry, this is a bit of a rant. I, I really, you know, want to say, I'm, I'm sensitive to it. If you vote for this, if you vote yes, on February 14th, traffic is going to be lousy. If you vote no on February 13th, on February 14th, traffic is going to be lousy. It's guaranteed, right? We live in a town with lousy traffic. We're trying to work towards that. This doesn't, this is not a perfect act, but I'll tell you what, it's pretty dang rare to get a bill that passes unanimously in the Senate, that gets all of the support from every Milton representative at the time, including Senator Timmeltie and Chris, Criscle. It's so rare to get that and to have it signed by a Republican governor. So I really hope that folks are watching and listening tonight and, and doing the math because I think that the answer is very clear. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Wells.
I'm trying to not speak here tonight, but I have to say something. But we got to get going. I mean, it's friggin' nine o'clock. I, I just want to say this, and I, I really want to be, the one commonality amongst all is 026. This is where we live. Everyone does, they have a right to an opinion. They have the right to think, you know, someone who loses on Woodland Road is going to have a much different impact to this than someone who loses on Golden Circle. And that's the fact of it. You brought up enforcement. I'm not an expert in many things, but enforcement's one of them. We have a 25 mile an hour speed limit. If the police department want to start setting up radar traps all over town tomorrow and start sighting cows at 26 miles an hour, they could do it, and I would venture to guess that 90% of the offenders would be Milton residents breaking the law. But they don't. I don't know Attorney General Campbell like I knew her precedent, like I knew now Governor Haley and especially Governor, Attorney General Coakley, reform AG yourself. In the enforcement business, you don't lead with a hammer, you lead with a carrot. And I don't, I get the feeling, sitting here tonight, that we're trying to scare people that like, that, that, please, I have not interrupted, I've not, I've done this for a long time. I do not, I, I take the, I understand the letter, I understand what she's written, I understand all the questions we tried to pose on Town Council tonight. But let's not use fear. Let's just let people vote, let them make their decision, and then we'll go from there, one way or the other. But I don't think we should be using General Campbell, is that like she's staging up on Beacon Hill with a tactical force waiting to come and get us if we vote no. That's not the case. And, and one thing I will say, as a reform AG, you know this yourself, the business in any enforcement is to use minimal in dialogue whenever you can, whether it's a noise complaint, whether it's something like this, that's what you're going to do. And I, I have full faith that the Attorney General of this Commonwealth is not sitting there just waiting to come here on February 14th if it's a no vote. And as I've said prior tonight, I don't believe that even if it is a no vote, that the people who are voting no, or have a no opinion, are doing so because they want to, they want to just not comply with the law. Fairness is a tough thing in this world. It really is. And when you're perceived as not being treated fairly, it sucks. It's, it's, it's that way if it's a kid in school, it's that way if it's a kid in sports, it's that way in business, in politics, in government. It's true. So I, let's not try to use this as, whatever happens, happens. Our responsibility, if it's a yes, then we continue. You said tonight, and I'm going to hold you to it, because I do think that plan needs to be tweaked. You're trying to convince me that putting 500 units potentially on Granite Avenue is a smart idea. It's crazy. But I'm not going there tonight. And if it's a no, let me finish, please. Please.
I thought you were finished, Mr. Wells, I'm sorry.
Please. I've sat here, I've not said anything. If it's a no vote, it is just as incumbent upon us as leaders of this community to continue to try and gain compliance. And that includes dialogue with the Attorney General. And every Attorney General I've mentioned, every assistant Attorney General I've ever worked with are known. I mean, I don't want people sitting at home here tonight thinking that suddenly the AG's office is going to come in and start dumping phones and do a subpoena, is pulling public records. It's not how they work. The letter of the law may allow that, but I've been here 40 years, and I, we haven't taken a, a public servant, or any public employee, or any public entity, whether it was on the DA's office or the AG's level, taken anything. And the law that Ms. Bradley refers to tonight has been in existence for as long as I can remember. As long as I can remember. Because in a criminal case, the first thing you do, anything, is you get subpoenaed, you dump the phone. So to think that, you know, that, I, I just don't want, we represent everyone who lives here, everyone who walks through that door, everyone who sits down, whether they're for it or against it. This is where we all live. Whether it was for four days, or four decades, we have that obligation. Mr. Chair, I only, I leave you with this. This is the second time the NPIC rep has been in this meeting. He was here, he was here. Two weeks ago, he left, we never got to him. He's been sitting here for two hours.
We're going to, I'm going to ask that we move it up.
Mr. Chair, can I respond? Just 15 seconds.
Let me just say, because Mr. Wells suggested that I, I know things. Here's what I know. And here's what I think.
I wasn't lying. I wasn't lying.
Not at all. I didn't say you were. I didn't say you were. I'm just, I just want to say, here's what I know. And here's what I think our responsibility is. Our responsibility...
I get it.
...is to tell the residents what the consequences could be of a yes-no vote or a no vote.
But we don't need to do a baseball bat.
And what we know, and what we know, is that if there is a no vote, it's going to be a big mess.
Maybe.
What we, what we know is if there's a, if there's a no vote, my friends, it will be a big mess. Mr. Zoll.
Thank you. And I just would, thank you, Mr. Chair. I tried not to interrupt you, Mr. Wells. I thought you were done with your remarks when I put my hand up. So I'm, I'm sorry that I interrupted you. I hope you'll extend the same courtesy to me and other members of the board. I just want to say, I am not trying to lead with fear here. This is not, talking about the consequences that are laid out to us in a letter from the Attorney General for a no vote is not leading with fear. I'm literally saying what the Attorney General is saying in their letter.
I get it.
So, you know, if, if that strikes fear into your heart, and it does strike fear into my heart, frankly, because I don't think we're a town that can afford to spend a lot of money on litigation and, and a loss of revenue, if that causes fear, I'm sorry for that. But all I'm doing, I'm really, like, I'm very sympathetic to people who are, are confused about this legislation, but I'm just trying to lay out the consequences of the no vote. That's all I'm trying to do. And in my heart of hearts, I think that we are a town that respects the law and that we will vote yes. And I agree with everything else that you said. I, I would be more than happy to see a continued refinement of this. I agree that we work on articles that, you know, that we, that we represent everybody in this town. And it's true that not every law affects everybody the same way. That's why, you know, we had laws in this town up until very recently that, you know, essentially enforced unfair housing standards for, for black and brown folks. I mean, the, the law has never, ever been 100% fair to everybody. And I think that this is an attempt to try to get a little bit more diversity in our housing stock, a little bit more, you know, address the climate crisis a little bit by encouraging use of public transportation. It's not perfect, but when you got a vast, vast majority of, you know...
It's not perfect, but when you got a vast, vast majority of, you know, 186, was it, to four, 183 to four votes in favor, that's, again, not perfect, but it's pretty dang good. I'm not, I'm not trying to lead with fear, Mr. Wells.
Sorry, no, I just, I just want to just call it one. That was the law, I agree with you, not the guidelines. It was never the law that we, that anyone contended it was the guidelines.
But we know that the guidelines.
But I'm not, I'm not going down there, we don't even have to, but I just, I get it. I get it.
Town council has told us that the guidelines.
I get it, I get it, I get it.
You don't go down there, you go down there.
I am finished, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Oh, Ms. Musto.
I'll try to make it quick because I know he's waiting too. Couple of things just want to say. Number one, you cited, I know Mr. Zull cited the numbers of legislators that voted for this, but they voted for, you know, the housing, but they didn't vote for the specifics of the housing. So it might have been a totally different decision had they known the specifics of the guidelines. They voted for multifamily housing, you know, reasonable size, that's the law, right? Then the guidelines, there's a question, and I'm not going to get into that, okay, we're not going to go there right again. But the point is, they didn't have all the facts. They had what, what it was at the time, okay? They didn't have the specifics for every community, okay, at the time. What I would say is this, I think people want thoughtful change in this town, and they want to do the right thing. And I think, I would echo what Mr. Wells said about fear. We represent the community, and however it goes on a vote, it goes, whether it's yes or no. At the end of the day, we're one community, we're one Milton, we have to work together. If people vote no, I know you had said it's a big, it's, it's going to be a big mess. We represent people, and if that's the way they vote, so be it, we have to work through it. The AG, her, her letter also said, she stands ready to work with any municipality that seeks to meet its legal responsibilities. Our strong preference is for cooperation and collaboration. Collaboration is working together. So even if the letter says what it says at the end about, you know, you know, saving, you know, the emails and whatever else, I think at the end of the day, no matter how this ends up, if it ends up that it's a no vote, my hope is that we would come together and we would work with the AG and get it right for the town. Thank you.
So just to, just to clarify, the legislation that was voted on by the legislature delegated to the Housing and Livable Communities Agency, the authority to promulgate the guidelines and come up with the theories. That's what they did. They delegated it to the agency to do that by statute. Other comments or questions?
Real quick. As somebody who's worked in the legislature and worked on massive law reform that took us 10 years to reform the chin system and multiple draftings of that, I can tell you that we did not absolutely put in all of the guidelines and all of the procedures that went along with it because the general laws are already massive enough. If we were to put in all the regulations that went along with this, it would never, it would be an impossibility. So that's why the legislature, in their wisdom, I believe that all of them knew what they were voting on that day. And I, I'm going to take a little offense for the folks that did vote on it because what you just implied was that they didn't know what they were voting on that, okay. So, all right, good, because they did know what they were voting on.
They didn't know the guidelines, specifically what they were.
Right, but they voted, they voted to allow another agency to promulgate those guidelines, no matter what they were. They could have come up with the fact that every house had to be blue. And the legislature still voted on that. And that's, I think, what the bigger piece of this is. The legislature, in their wisdom, sent this off to the agency that had the most experience and the most knowledge. Now, I don't have the most knowledge of everything in this world, neither does Mr. Zulus or Mr. Zull or even Ms. Musto. What we do is we work together to bring all of our different pieces of knowledge, and for me personally, I hire people that know more than me so that I can ensure that things are done properly, right? So the legislature doesn't know all these things, ins and outs about zoning, they're not supposed to know the ins and outs of zoning. So they told HLC to do this. That's what they voted on. It's not that, that there was something that was nefarious in what was happening with these guidelines that came out. This is the exact way that laws are made, 100% across the board. This is how we make progress in the Commonwealth. And so I just wanted to be clear that those people that voted on this, 184?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, knew what they were voting on. And we now have an obligation to follow what they voted on. And what that looks like, I'm not, you know, scare tactics, no scare tactics, I'm just saying, I'm not deleting anything on my phone, nor am I texting anybody these days, even if it's my best friend. So I just think that we need to be cautious.
You just saved a hundred bucks a month because you needed a phone anymore.
Right, I don't need a phone. But I think we need to be cautious about what we're doing here because we are the first ones. And there's no saying that the Attorney General is not going to come down the hardest on us because she doesn't want to do this with X amount of towns that are following us. So I just want to make sure that people are well aware of what the consequences are and the factual consequences are of the vote that's happening and these letters that have been given to us. That's it, my soapbox, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Musto, we agree that if there is a no vote, we will all be in a big mess together. We will all be in that big mess together. Anything further on this?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mello, thank you, Mr. Milano. To be continued. Without objection, I'd like to move up, item eight, which is our Select Board Landing Committee, so Mr. Burke can join us.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dick.
My name is Dick Burke. I live at 607 Pleasant Street in Milton. I'm a, I was a former member of the Master Plan Committee, a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and a member of the Milton Landing Committee. Last week, at our MPIC meeting, Cheryl Tagayas, our chair, asked me, or actually conscripted me, to attend this meeting this evening, to talk about some comments and questions and concerns about the Milton Landing as it related to the RFP, the process, the charge, the composition of the group going forward. It was a topic of conversation at our meeting, and I think that one of the things I also bring, besides spending a lot of time dealing with Milton Landing over the years, is that I grew up in Milton, I was born in Milton. I'm very familiar with Milton Landing, having spent four years taking the MBTA from Milton Village to high school and two years to graduate school. I'm also familiar with, over the years, how that landing has, has transpired and moved, coming from being virtually nothing down there to ALA Wharf until what we're trying to get to today. Now, I could ask, you know, I could certainly sit here and have you ask me questions about anything that, that has to do with the landing. I could go through a synopsis of what we, how it started, where we are, but I'll leave that up to you. I know it's getting late, and I will say, before I said yes to Cheryl, I checked the brewing schedule, and since there was no game tonight, but even if there was a game tonight, I think I would have been all right. So I'll just leave it, leave it at that, and that's my introduction, and you can tell me how you want me to move forward.
Mr. Chair, he forgot, he forgot his most important committee, Traffic Mitigation.
Traffic Mitigation Committee. Traffic Mitigation, 7:00 AM weekly for about a year.
That's right, Michael, you and I were side by side.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's going to bear some fruit next Thursday night.
We're keeping our fingers crossed.
This Thursday night. But back to this, the agenda item is, pardon me, discussion update approval Select Board Milton Landing Committee charge composition of the Select Board Landing Committee. Previously, we, there had been some discussions about the charge and the composition, whether that should change, whether there should be some change to the charge or some change to the composition of the committee. Dick, if you have some thoughts on that?
Well, I do, as a matter of fact, I think that once we get through this RFP process, I would certainly recommend that we change the charge and the composition. I think that as part of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, as we started to deal with the revitalization of Milton Village, it became readily apparent to everyone who was involved with the process, and it was a fairly lengthy process, that the landing was an integral part and a very involved part of any, any plan we were doing down there as we were dealing with revitalization of, of the village, which was the first business district that we chose that was highlighted by residents as one of the major, major interests of residents of the town to revitalize the business districts. No one ever thought that the process would take as long as we did. It was involved getting the overlay together. We then hired MAPC and worked with them. They had an extensive public outreach group, or a process, where they conducted interviews with 16 stakeholders and included residents, the butters, business people, landlords, Milton Yacht Club, Friends of Milton, Crewe, ALA Wharf, Farmers Market, Milton Historical, Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Commission, as well as the Select Board and Planning Board. So there was a fair amount of outreach, and on top of that, they did an online survey. So that we had, I think we had plenty of information, and we gave ample opportunity for people to participate in the process. Now, I understand, we've gone through an RFP process twice, we've made some recommendations, okay? The first one didn't come back as well as we liked, we went out again, we've had, we had some different bidders on this, and I think that we have recommended the Milton Yacht Club, as all our job is to recommend to the Milton Yacht Club be a tenant at 25, 25 Wharf Street, and Dexter Southfield School to be the tenant at Bojot B and the Naponton River Rowing Club, I think, which is.
Yep, and it's a combination of Milton and Naponton.
What's interesting about this, that I thought was interesting, is there has been some talk, and I've heard this, there's been an effort to remove the Milton Yacht Club as part of Milton Landing. Now, if you take a look at their lease structure, they've been a tenant at Will for six years, paying about $13,000 a year to the town of Milton, going to Parks and Recreation. We recommended the Milton Yacht Club to be the tenant at 25 Wharf at a total cost of $2,500 a year, okay? A dramatic decrease in what they were paying, paying to this town. Now, the reason for that, it wasn't anything because anyone had a good friend with the yacht club, and it's almost the opposite, I would say, so, you know, I'm not getting Christmas cards from the people at the yacht club. But the idea was, we thought that through the efforts of trying to revitalize and renovate 25 Wharf Street with monies from CPA funds, they would be going through a difficult time having their meetings, and so we said, well, this would be a pretty good time for their five-year lease to give them a little break going forward. Which didn't work out to their favor, as they wanted to be able to leave their boats on 41 Wharf. That was, that was difficult. That was, that was an attempt by them, and I would probably do the same thing as a way to augment their revenues to pay for their operation. I don't think we're in the business. We, they had a, they have a bid of $10,000 for that property, we have a bid for $20,000 from Dexter Southfield School. I don't know how you take the, the lesser bid. So I'll leave that at that. I know you have questions and concerns, but I'm here to answer those as best I can.
Comments or questions on the charge and composition of the Landing Committee?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's a good question, first. Ms. Bradley, and then Mr. Wilson.
I just, a real quick question. Mr. Burke, you say that your job is to recommend.
That's right.
Can you tell me when you recommended to the Select Board to install a new fence down there?
Solid fence?
Install the fence.
I don't even remember talking about the fence.
So the fence magically appeared there and nobody?
Of course it didn't magically appear there.
Right, so explain that to me.
Okay, so how did, how did, Mr. Milano, do you have an idea how the fence magically appeared?
I can explain it.
All right, Mr. Wells.
So, the fence, in, in the, just as Mr. Milano's negotiating, and I don't want to get into what Dexter Southfield's asking for because we haven't finalized the lease, because I went back and looked at my notes, because I did know, when this committee started, this is, Mr. Burke, this was handed off to us, there were two prime members of this board who served on this with me, first Ms. Connel and then Ms. Collins. At several points, the safety of the landing, the safety of the wall came up, both from yacht club people and from residents. And to be honest with you, I had forgotten how, because to me, it was a kind of a no-brainer. And when I look at, the river has, we've just had four of the most historic high tides that we've had in years, and the river has frozen for the first time in five years, which I recall as Police Chief going out and buying safety rings one winter and then putting them up down there because some was concerned about someone going over the wall. So when I went back and looked into my notes, the request for the fence came in the negotiations with the Naponton Rowing Club as a condition of their lease. And that is how the fence discussion started.
And who approved it, though?
The town did.
Because it never came to us.
It wouldn't be us. So, and I, I'm not going to argue with that, like, because...
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, though, is that Mr. Burke just made a point of saying that he, that the entire point of the Milton Landing Committee is to make recommendations to the Select Board. For the first two years.
For RFPs, these are operational things.
For the first two years I sat on this, this board, I didn't hear anything from the Milton Landing Committee. In fact, one of the first things I heard from the Milton Landing Committee is that we had to pay a bill of $9,000 for a fence that I had no idea about. And so for me to be sitting here and just thinking that this is an okay way to go about business is not an okay way to go about business. It's not okay that, that there's a committee that has not reported to us in two years, that hasn't said anything to us in two years except for an executive session regarding the RFPs, but there's been nothing, nobody has come before us and said, this is what we would like to do, this is our plan. The last thing we received from anybody was five, six years ago now, from the, from the MPIC about this plan, which was produced.
Wrong.
And I'm looking at the date right now, it's 2018.
Hold on, hold on, let's.
It's 2018.
2019 is the one I have right here that you have.
No, I, Mr. Chair, what does that date say?
This is the, are you asking me? The final summary report of the Town of Milton Master Plan Implementation Committee, and it dates June 1st, 2018, but we don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I have, 18.
Well, you also have one in 2019.
I think that might have been the, that might have been the follow-up letter from MPIC on it.
Wow.
So that, that's what, I think that's what that is.
We don't, we don't have that.
Cheryl actually, I think, sent it to everyone on the board recently.
Yes, so there was a report in 2018, and then there was a letter in 2019.
My point being is that nobody has been in front of this committee in years.
Wrong.
Okay, let's, let's let her finish, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Wells.
Let me rephrase that. Nobody has been in front of this committee since I became elected to this board. I have not seen anybody from the Milton Landing in front of this committee discussing things that was going on in the Milton Landing since I've been elected, unless it was an executive session regarding the RFP. The first time that I heard about anything was the fence. And that's why I want to know how the fence came about, that it was approved to be paid for, for $9,000, and it never came through the Finance Committee, it was never brought here to the Select Board. And, and Mr. Burke just said that their job, your job, is to make recommendations to us. I have not heard any recommendations since I've been elected to this board, except for the RFP.
You voted on, you voted on the RFP for the Milton Yacht Club last year.
So let's, if we could, Mr. Milano, and then Mr. Wells, is that okay, Mr. Wells?
No, but...
No, all right, well, let's go to Mr. Wells. Go ahead, Mr. Wells, go ahead. And then we'll go to Mr. Milano.
So, and you can, because you've been here for all of this with me. When we began this committee, whose entire charge is not the Farmers Market, it's, it's the use and gaining access and finding tenants for 2541 Wharf Street, the Milton Landing. When we began the charge, A number one, we had no idea that we did not own 41 Wharf Street. And as you and I both know, because we negotiate, it was a long and lengthy process by this board to negotiate and purchase 41 Wharf for the town, correct? We didn't, no one, I am, well, you're the only one who was here with me, so I'm just...
There's all those things that are.
And all that, all that was done by this board. No one, not to pull the MPIC.
Hopefully, people can make their points without...
No one could have, quoting myself.
Press examining may go in.
No one could have envisioned, especially me, that we wouldn't have owned it. Next, no one would have known that the landing, that the dock itself, the Milton Landing, which was owned by the town, that we know today is owned by the town, that the yacht club would try to change, claim ownership of it, and this board had to vote to have Town Council fight that, which we prevailed at. And we did. This board then voted, we put out an RFP in two thousand nineteen for twenty-five, the building twenty-five in Lot A, which were the only two things we owned. The town assessors recommended to us that we take a minimum bid of twenty-five thousand dollars. The bid came in at thirteen hundred. We rejected it and that's when we went through the lengthy process of buying, getting through town meeting and purchasing forty-one. From forty-one, this board then approved an RFP, which we put out for both Lot A, B and C in the building. As Mr. Burke alluded, and I'm not going, I feel like I'm trying a case, for many reasons of which I supported, we gave them the building at twenty-five hundred dollars. We then voted Lot A and Lot B. The Lot C, in the negotiations for Lot C, and to be honest, if you want to make a Supreme Court case out of it, that's fine. I don't, that's fine. If you want to blame me, I'll take all the responsibility.
I just want to know who did it.
Let me finish. I did.
Oh, you did. You ordered the fence?
No, let me finish.
Let's let people finish.
These are operational decisions. I don't, I'm not, I've said, how many times have you heard me say, I don't, I'm not the Police Chief anymore, I'm not a department, I don't want to be operational. In the negotiations for the fence, we asked the question of the DPW, could we get a quote, how much this would cost? Because is this going to be something that we could pay for? Because the landing bylaw, the bylaw that was passed, or the article that was passed to create the landing account, now allowed for funds that are taken by rent from twenty-five and forty-one Warf to go to a revolving account to support what goes on there. Because prior to that, for fifteen odd years, thousands, I like what Mr. Zoll, this is all, I'll wait, thousands upon thousands of dollars of rent that was collected by this town from the yacht club. You want to talk about where money went? I have no idea.
Me neither.
No one. Let me digress. So, in the discussion, they brought up the fence, the DPW got the quote, the fence was done. To me, those are operational decisions made by the town administrator. We don't have to be, that committee falls under the Select Board, which, we have a strong town administrator. There was ninety-five hundred dollars needed to be done, it was a safety thing, I have no problem with. If you wanted to come in, you want to take our time, it's frigging nine thirty-five and we're discussing this tonight and you want to vote on little things like that, that should be his responsibility, fine. Want to blame me, fine. But to be honest with you, until I went back, I looked at my notes, I couldn't re, let me just finish.
Sure.
I couldn't remember where it came from. And I'm just going to finish with this, because I've had a long day and I've had the death of a very close friend today and I just, sorry to hear that. I could have never envisioned the headaches, we could not, the pollution, all the work that's gone into getting us to where we are today. It is the hottest thing I've done since I've been on this, the hottest. No one cared about it, no one in this room ever cared about it, no one in Town Hall ever cared about it, it just went. So, we have come so close and we worked so hard to get where we are today. We're protected that the yacht club gets to stay there, you've sat in the room with me, you've watched me be as compassionate and caring to them as I can fiscally, we had, we, the other one always says, every dollar counts, while still being fiscal, and if a fence got pulled up, that to me, because in a negotiation with a potential tenant, that we spent ninety-five hundred dollars, that came out of a revolving account that was, would have gone there anyway, so be it. And if I effed up doing that, so be it. I, I, let me just, I'm almost done. It was a negotiation, it was something they were concerned about, their parents of young kids and knowing that Warf and knowing the dangers of that wall, which is part of the reason why they gave us a seawall grant, it was a no-brainer to me. I didn't even give it a thought.
Mr. Wells, can we just ask Mr. Milano and then Ms. Musto? Mr. Milano, you had something to say?
No, I was just going to, Mr. Wells hit it, the landing committee talked about it, I signed off on it, DPW did it. That is what happened. Coming out of this, we understand that the board wants to weigh in and we will bring such decisions to the board until the board says we're good. But that is what happened, I agree with Mr. Wells in terms of the breakdown. So if there's an issue with that, we hear you and we'll fix that going forward. But that is, Landing Committee made a recommendation and we executed based on that and.
And Mr. Milano, technically, it's the Select Board that controls the revolving fund.
The funding for, yes, for that, yes, correct.
Now, Ms. Musto and then Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. I think Mr. Milano summed up some of what I was going to say and he's also on the Landing Committee, so he has been at the meetings. And as was said earlier, we have a strong town administrator and, you know, this is under ten thousand dollars. We've talked about things where we're up to fifty thousand dollars that we're going to let him sign off on. And it sounds like this was obviously a safety issue. As far as the committee and different things not coming before the Select Board, I remember presentations we've had about, you know, seeing if we could get this added on to the super fund site and things like that recently. So there have been instances that we've come on board, because with the landing, there was a presentation about that here, I believe, talking about that there's a super fund site above the Baker Dam and with doing dredging down at this lower end, that, seeing if it could be expanded down to this lower end with the EPA because of the cost of it. I know we had a presentation on that not too long ago.
I believe that may predate Ms. Bradley being, we brought the Conservation Commission in with the EPA.
What you're referring to, Roxanne, is when Richard brought to us about having the event, but there was no, it was just, I'm having this event and that was, Mr. Zulus actually brought it up.
That's right, that was the boat trip.
The boat trip, yeah.
Ms. Musto.
I do believe, though, not too long ago, we did talk about expand, expanding, like, we're talking about getting dredging done and we did talk about the cost being exorbitant and that that would need, we were trying to, I think Josh might have been on it as well.
Josh was on the committee.
Yeah, but I think he might have been at the meeting here, talking about that we want to, you know, we're working through the EPA to see if that can be expanded further down because of pollution.
So, oh, Mr. Z.
Well, I would just like to propose a, that we maybe think about the, because we're, the topic here is the charge and the role of the, of the committee. And so, I would like maybe to just say a couple of words about that. So the, you know, the, the charge has the committee advising the Select Board on the implementation of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council Waterfront Recreational Access Study at Milton Landing, Final Summary Report, two thousand eighteen, which is now six years ago, to advise the Select Board on and collaborate with the Planning Board on the implementation of Milton Village Mixed-Used Planning Unit Development Overlay Zoning, two thousand twenty, and to identify and review opportunities for the augmentation anyways, you sort of get the, the whole point. I, I, I think it would be interesting, you know, there's, so, so, we're not in two thousand eighteen anymore. We have new environmental things that have come up. I think, you know, one thing that's absent from this, that we should certainly be thinking about is climate change, because we know that climate change is going to affect coastal areas and watersheds much more significantly than, than other parts of the town. So I think it would be a, a good exercise. I don't know that tonight is the right night to do it, given the hour in, in the conversation so far, but I, you know, I would love to see, I actually use the landing regularly in the summertime, not as a boater, although I'd love to own a boat, my wife does not, would not like to own a boat. But we, we volunteer at the Farmers Market and a couple of times a month, we're down there for a few hours. And, you know, that's part of the landing and the, as we heard earlier, the, you know, the Business District is the oldest business, you know, in, in town, really the sort of original site of Milton Settlement. So I, I think it would be interesting to explore, thinking about this area as, you know, in a more connected way. I totally understand a lot of the individual issues are around how, who are we charging rent to at the landing and how are we storing boats? I think that there's been a lot of really great work that's happened over the last couple of months and, you know, and I, I feel like we're getting to a point of resolution on that and I salute the work of the committee, because I know that's been a very long and protracted negotiation with multiple parties. We may be at the point now where we can start thinking about the landing in a more broad sense that includes businesses, that includes, you know, adjacent to the landing. And I, so I think, I would love to see that change. Again, I think we probably want to maybe, I don't know if we want to discuss it now or if we would want to deal with it later, but I think it makes sense to review the charge and think about what the purpose of the committee is, given all of the developments that have happened.
So, let me just make a suggestion first, I think Mr. Zoll's domestic boat issues may be just a little far afield from our agenda, I think, but we can, we can talk about that sometime.
Please talk to my wife about that.
Yeah. If, if we want, Mr. Burke mentioned that he thinks that, that the charge and the composition should change after the RFP. And Mr. Burke has been involved with this since before day one, seems to me. So, so it may benefit us to hear from Mr. Burke, not necessarily tonight, but maybe give it some thought.
Michael, this is.
But I don't want to, Richard, if you want to go ahead, but I, but I just, I just like to hear from, from Dick at some point, not tonight, on what, how the charge and the composi, and maybe from the whole committee, on how the charge and the composition should change. Mr. Wells, go ahead.
So let me, so two, two things from the original charge that clearly, we've had no ability to look at anything beyond twenty-five Warf. To be honest with you, I haven't even thought. I mean, the, the priority right now is, there are three, and we, I talk about all the time, Nick and I talked about earlier tonight. A, finishing negotiations on the RFP. B, securing something for the yacht club, hopefully Lot A. C, getting a new ramp built, because that is, Nick and I, that is, getting rid of that old ramp is just a game changer. And the biggest thing, and I, and now I'm, I go to Napont Water, Riverside Community, I mean, I mean, Moore, is we have a twenty-five million dollar toxic nightmare on the saltwater side. And my greatest fear is that, because we already know from our preliminary meetings with the EPA, that as they begin the cleanup of the freshwater opulent of the Mother Dam, that those toxins are going to come into the saltwater side and not behind. I mean, it is like, you may have seen the two, the two-page article on the, it's beautiful. I mean, it's, to look at it from the eye, to walk Pope John Paul Park, to go, to just sit down and watch, it's beautiful. It's a frigging cancer site. Like, I mean, do we really want to leave this for future generations? I'm like, the climate change aspect of it, and I, I didn't, prior to Roxanne, Melinda served, we had, served as our Landing Committee rep to Senator Golden Save the Harbor Save, because he's been really, I mean, it's been quiet lately, but we've just had the four highest tides in history. The four highest tides in history have just come in Napont over the past two weeks. The damage, I've walked it, I can't even tell you how many times I told you that today, the damage particularly on the concert, the side, the State Street, concert going out towards State Street, Boston Scientific, is immense. That whole, they called it Napont Water work, that Quincy put it on their side, devastated. And the two important parts of this that we haven't talked about is Boston and Quincy are part of this with us. We're only half that river. The midline of that river is, you know, we're, we're the right. Now granted, the landing basin is ours, but they have to be just as involved in this as we do. Quincy's been great. I listened to them speak at the, at the NEPR meeting the other day, they were very good. But I, I think as far as, I do agree with you, because none of us are experts in the environmental aspect of it, none of us are. And we are going to need someone from town who kind of has that EPA environmental climate background. There's not, I mean, I've learned a lot in these past five years, as has Dick in Roxanne and now in the, in you.
No, yeah.
And, I mean, when I say we, as a community, have neglected a beautiful, we've neglected it and now we're paying the price. And we owe it to our children, their children and their children to clean this, future generations. And it is, this is a, this will not be in my time, it won't be in anyone else's city, it won't be. It'll be five years before they're even, I'm listening to this, I listened to their progress on the upper, it's going to be five years before they're even in the meat of that and they're not going to touch this. They can't, even if we get, and I believe we have a very strong argument that we will be, they will have to clean this. I think us, Boston, Quincy, they'll have to clean the whole thing, that, you're talking a ten-year project and it, and it's probably fifty to sixty million dollars before it's all said and done. So that's, to me is, to me, you see, our meetings really don't go anything beyond like the river, the pollution, the ramp and the tenants right now. That stuff, I mean, no one, and I, I'm sorry if I get upset about the, because no one could have ever envisioned just what they neglected, that we didn't even own it. You know, as Dick's always said, boats are all a property, they were coming, we didn't even own it. Eighty-eight Warf owned it. And you, you involved in negotiations to get that. And that took a seventy-five thousand dollar payment, which this board proved, to go into a special fund to protect it, because we don't own environmental hazards underneath what we own now.
They paid us.
They paid us, I know, they paid us. So that's, that's, I, where we're at in this little thing right now, the, the three things I've talked about, to me, the crux of this work and then going forward, I mean, I, I would hope long-term, everything that everyone has said is true. I grew up there, my grandparents grew up in, my father grew up with Walter Baker, like, I've been going down there my whole life. It is truly a jewel and I, I applaud what Chairman Gias and the MPIC did down there. I think the Milton Village Central is just an absolute jewel, but this is just as much an important part of it and we have to. And, and I know that, you know, the yacht club is a little upset and I can get it because they've had it their own way, I mean, no one cared about them, including us, no one cared. But those are the things that we're committed to right now. But I, I do agree with Dick, at some point, we're going to want, the Farmers Market, that's one, but I think for right now, just environmentally, climate-wise, pollution-wise, and, and, and the main goal, gaining access for residents of the town to the water are the main things we have to, we've come so far, but we're not there yet.
Ms. Wells.
Sorry, I was so.
No, not at all. Other comments or questions or Mr. Burke?
I'm just going to, going to sort of sum, sum up from being on this Landing Committee for as long as, as I have been, with, with some great partners in terms of people from the town and people from the Board of Select, Selectment, the Select Board, excuse me. But the whole idea is we owe it to the people of the town who participated in the master plan to come forward with something. And what they said over and over again, they came out in the master plan, it came out again in the MAPC study and you can take a, really take a good look at that. They want it safe, they want it clean, they want it accessible and they want, and, and we need clearly defined relationships and responsibility. We, I used to say, when I went down there the first time, if I put a empty Coke bottle in the middle of the landing, we couldn't determine who had the responsibility of picking it up. Was it the DPW, was it Parks and Recreation, was it ADA Warf or was it Milton Yacht Club, right? And that's really what we're trying to get to. And if you remember going back to when the special permit was given to ADA Warf, that land eventually was supposed to be parking, okay? And so what we're trying to do is really try to, you know, you know, not, not to be Solomon here and split the baby as best we can, but there are certain places where I think we, we, we can maximize opportunities for the tenants, but also for the town. And I think the big thing for me, and going back to what Mr. Zoll said, it has to be accessible, it has to be safe, it has to be clean, and if we're not doing that, quite frankly, I don't think we're doing our job. And I think, you know, once again, we gave, we gave a sort of a haircut until the yacht club, until we were, you know, can get, get our arms around renovating twenty-five Warf, I understand, we've run into some roadblocks on that a little bit. And I don't think it's, to me, it's a little disingenuous as a town. We can talk about historical, historical buildings, but here's one the town owns, that we're watching disintegrate in front of our, in front of our eyes and we have the nerve to put it out to bid for someone to actually use it as, as, as a, as a headquarters. So we really have some work to do. I mean, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's, it's not, it's not pretty, it's, we know it's expensive. We have the Historical Commission, O'Donnell and Ellen Isolone go down there, this thing is not inexpensive. I talked to Chris Hayden the other day about getting the cost of slate roofing, if you can find it, what to do, we're almost doing it backwards, we're doing it from the outside in, we're doing the windows and the doors and the gutters and then do the roof last. That, to me, is a very interesting, interesting way of, you know, shoring up a house, right? But if that's the best we can do, you know, I think we can do that. But there are, there are certain things we really owe this town and I feel like, you know, I've been involved with this thing too long, quite frankly, and I will not want to be a part of the Landing Committee going forward. of the landing committee going forward, but I do think we have to get some, we've got to stop, stop, stop the music and find out where people are going to be sitting. We have some people who are interested in paying this town money to be tenants, okay? It's a good thing for Milton Yard Club to get away from their tenancy at will. We're gonna get another group in there who's gonna pay more money to the town than a competing bid, and we have another group, the Naperville Rowing Club, also in there, who I think will be good tenants, with the farmers market and other people. We can expand the use of this, but it has to be accessible. And one thing I will say, and this came out in the master plan, is that many residents commented on the general feeling that the public is not welcome or cannot access the river, all right? That came out loud and clear, okay? And right now, we have to deal with that. That's not gonna solve itself, and that's up to you people, you know, to do, you know, as your job. Ms. Bradley is going to you with recommendations, we have some recommendations, we'll see, we'll see what happens with those recommendations. But I think let's put, let's put an end to this one way or the other, then we can change the composition of the charge of the committee and change the people on the committee, because you want to get more and more people, as this Milton Village is starting to coagulate now, and starting to get more interest from the business community and the renovations down there, this is gonna be a good place and a good situation for the town of Milton. And I think this is, this is a step, people didn't think it was the most important for a step, but it's an integral and involved step we have to take, and we should take it as soon, as soon as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Is that a good game plan going?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, Ms. Bradley, please.
I've been looking on the website, I can't find the composition of this committee, I can't find meeting minutes of this committee.
Oh, they're there.
I don't know where they are. I looked under our committee, I looked under boards and committees.
Well, they're there, because Josh does, I mean, he's been taking us.
Guys, I am not saying that Josh doesn't do them. What I am saying is, I'm on the website, I cannot find the composition, nor can I find the meeting minutes.
So I can give you the composition.
So.
Let's let Ms. Bradley finish. Yes, please.
Under, it came up for me, boards and committees, select board landing committee, the members are listed, and.
Under boards and committees?
Yep. Select board landing committee is the name.
Oh, select, it's not under Milton Landing Committee?
No, it's not, sorry.
Okay, thank you for that.
And then there's a link there that'll take you to.
To all the things, I see it now, and I see all the people. So most of these people are town employees.
Yes.
Yep.
That's correct.
I think that that puts our town employees kind of in a rock and a hard place. They report to Mr. Milano, who is also on this, and I think that, I'm not saying that you guys shouldn't have a staffer to work on it, but it's, these are voting members, correct?
Correct.
So they would never vote, I mean, they might, but they probably would never vote in opposition of whatever Nick was gonna do.
Oh, no.
Right, so that, right, so what I'm saying is.
No, no, no. But it's not, we don't have those kind of, it's not that kind of committee, it's.
So, but you're voting, are you voting on things, see, this is.
The committee is made of specialties, let me just begin.
Well, no, hold on.
Let's let Ms. Bradley finish.
Richard, you gave me a lot of history, and I appreciate all the history that went back 100 years. I'm just trying to deal with the last year. And so what I'm trying to figure out in the last year is, there have been things that have been voted on. RFPs have been voted on, other things have been voted on, and I'm curious to know, there is a lot, literally, I think, I think Mr. Burke is the only citizen that's on this. The rest of them are select board members, you and Roxanne, or.
Or Teddy Carroll.
Teddy Carroll.
Oh, on top here, after him, okay. So the rest of them are all staff.
Do you know why? Do you want me to kind of answer it?
Well, that's what Ms. Bradley.
The thing of it is, Richard, is that I know that this is your thing. I get it.
I didn't create this committee.
And I'm not, I'm not here, I'm not here to tear apart what you guys have done, what you've been working on. And to be honest with you, I don't even give a crap about the fence. What I give a crap about is that it came to us and nobody knew about it. Like, it hadn't even been a blip. And that's the part where I don't like being taken off guard, just like you don't like being taken off guard. That is not something that we try and do here in our camaraderie. And to be honest with you, when it was brought to us, Nick didn't even really, it was, it wasn't what he's saying now, which is, he's the one that said that this should happen. So there was a lot of confusion around this. And if the other folks that were in those meetings are choosing not to say anything, that's fine. I have no problem being a voice. But I am adamant that these, just like you said, Mr. Burke, these people should not be voting members. You want to make them ex officio members, you want to make them there so that they can talk about things, that's great and that's fine, but right now, what this looks like to the general public.
You're the only one saying it.
Is, wow. And isn't that great that I'm the only one saying some things, that I'm actually digging into some things on this committee that report back to the select board? Isn't that what we're supposed to be doing? Mister, Mister, I was gonna say, Mr. Zulis, and that's not his name, Mr. Wells. I mean, isn't this, isn't this what we're supposed to be doing here? I'm not doing this to personally attack you, what I'm doing is trying to figure out what is going on with this committee that meets at 8:00 in the morning. I can't go to it, because you already got two members on it, so I can't even go and watch.
All right, so, Mr. Wells, are you?
You don't want to hear it.
Okay.
Whatever. You know what, you do whatever you want with the committees, I don't, this committee, it really, you know.
No, no, I think we, I think we, I think we, oh, sorry, Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I would like to say a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Milano is on that committee, and, you know, he could easily report some of this stuff back to you about the fence. I believe you've been at most of the meetings, Nick, because I've been at most of them as well.
Yes, he's at all of them.
Yeah, so as far as the process, I, you know, I've seen at some of the meetings that, you know, when we were looking at different things, there have been different opinions from different people that sit on that committee, that, you know, that are town employees. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I think that, I don't think that's the culture that people would feel that way, that they couldn't express their viewpoint. I don't think that Mr. Milano gives that vibe, and I would, I mean, if, I don't know if Mr. Milano would like to talk about that, but I don't think, I don't get that the employees that are on there feel uncomfortable, and maybe we'd have to ask them, but I don't get that impression that they feel uncomfortable expressing their viewpoint. That has been what I've observed, because they freely have on different issues where we're not always, you know, 100% in consensus, even when we were talking about some of the RFPs, there was a different opinion, and then we sort of talked about the differences back and forth, we had a, we had sheets where we looked and voted, you know, ranked, I should say, you know, the proposals as well, and we had discussion about that, so I just wanted to.
And we only recommend the RFPs here.
Right.
We don't award them, we recommend them to this board, and the board decides whether or not to do, and then the town administrator negotiates or doesn't negotiate a lease.
Right.
And every person that is on that, the MPIC clearly helped us, this board, put together a committee and who they thought should be on it. Bill Ritchie was, they picked, they were the ones who recommended conservative facilities, and we went along with it. They were the ones who recommended park department, and we went along with it. They were the one who recommended it, an MPIC rep, because they had done it, and we all agreed. And clearly, for either Tim or Josh, and Nick Falls, Falls Air Marie, and previously Mike Dennehy, it is now part of what he is responsible for that he never knew. The first thing Bill Ritchie said when he came, it's not my building, first meeting, didn't he just, not my building, I'm responsible for that. And then we showed him he was, and he goes, I don't have a key. He didn't even have a key. So, look, I'm too tired today, I'm too, I'm not, all I know is how much we've put into this and how hard we've worked, and if, again, if the fence pisses people off, I'll take the blame.
So let's, I.
It won't happen again.
So I think we have consensus here, that we want, and we've been, and we're trying to, and we're working towards more transparency, more reporting, so that this board is clear on what's, what's going on, what's going on with the landing committee. I think we have consensus that there should be a change to the charge, into the, into the composition of that committee. We don't have a proposal on that, but if we get a proposal on that, then that's something in specific that we can discuss. So it seems to me we have, we have consensus about more transparency, more reporting, changing the composition, perhaps after we've decided, we've taken up the recommendations on the RFP, we'll change the composition of the committee and change the charge. Does that, does that sound like where we are?
Can I finish?
Mr. Wells, please.
And the one final thing that I wanted to do this, that I truly hope we will do this spring, is that we will take a tour so that all of you can see what this river represents to this community.
I would love that.
You need to see it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Wells. All right, Mr. Burke, thank you.
You're entirely welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
For several, for a couple of evenings.
I get cranky as the night gets on, but it's, you know, it's, this has been, been out there for so long, you just, you know, sometimes you just want closure. It's not the work you put in that gets you weary, it's just the time, you know, if you think about this, we've been talking about this since 2017, going back to, you know, when everyone said, I mean, going back to, you know, 2018, 2019, you know, I would, I would have thought that the Board of Selectmen would have signed off on the composition of this committee. I don't know that, I don't remember that, nor do I care at this point right now, because it's almost over, right? So the idea is that once we get together, and the other thing too is, some of the, some of the groups that we thought maybe, or should be eligible to be part of the committee, because they bring, bring very different views, we thought they may have been conflicted with conflict of interest if they decided to bid on things. So, in that regard, once we get everything in place, as we say here, we've defined relationships and responsibilities, once you have that, you can make this group as big as you want. And as I said, going back to the MAPC, when we, when they were hired, the number of interviews they did, I mean, they interviewed everyone, I mean, Josh Fiala was everywhere talking to people in terms of getting inputs, so no one can, no one can say, you know, they weren't listened to, and if they, if they weren't there very often, we invited them. So we had, we had numerous meetings, some good, some not so good, with people in terms of their views, and I understand that, because we were trying to do something very different down there and changes hat, as we're seeing going forward.
Yes.
Because it wasn't too early. All right.
Mr. Wells.
Well, listen, thanks a lot, everyone, and have a good evening.
Before you leave, Dick, just one more point.
Mr. Burke, Mr. Wells wants to hold your horses.
I didn't ask for this. I took this on at the request of the Chair of the MPIC and then the Board. I had no clue, and the reason that they came to me was, they knew that I loved the river, they knew I had a love of the water, and I've been a boater my whole life. Dick is correct, the two things that they said to me was, no one, you can't have anyone from ADA Worf, they said, take my advice, no tenants, because they're going to be, and it was probably the best advice, because we could have never envisioned the difficult path this would take. No one.
Well, the other thing too is, remember, we didn't own 41 Worf, that Michael, when you were part of. That was part of, that was always one of the squirrely parts of the negotiation, no one knew who owned that, and when that license ended, which was an easement between ADA Worf and the town, they were on a year-to-year, I mean, Ned Clark was in here every year asking for an extension, until such point, he came to us and said, hey, we don't want this anymore, will you take it? Right? And so that was part of the negotiation. Once that happened, and then, then we realized that Milton Yard Club was still a tenant at will since 2016, we thought this was the perfect time to go over the RFP.
You were here, we were 30 days away from letting that easement expire, vacating the entire thing and turning the entire landing into a parking lot.
And talk about language as attorneys, and those of us who deal with attorneys, shall be 14 parking spots.
Yeah.
All right, we had that conversation with Ned, he said, well, that won't be the whole thing, and I said, Ned, I could put a car, it doesn't have to be contiguous, I could put a car here and a car there, and he said, you'd have nothing, it would have no value.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, it was a long discussion, we.
Sorry to take so much of your time.
Well, no, no, we got a lot out there, I think it was very productive to get all us out there and to, and to move forward in a productive way, so, thanks, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Good night, thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
And I haven't met before, and have a good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Same to you, sir.
All right.
I'm glad you didn't miss any hockey tonight.
All right, so, going back to item seven, which is our specialized building code, do we still have Josh with us? We do have Josh with us.
Poor Josh, Josh is listening all, what do you think, Josh?
We've had approval of the Sustainable Milton request to include a warrant article on the adoption of the opt-in specialized business, specialized business code, building code, sorry.
Which, whatever's this, Mr. Chair, just sorry.
This is item seven on the agenda, but I think we'll move quickly after.
You want a motion? I'll make a motion.
Well, I think we, I think we owe it to Mr., I think we owe it to Josh.
See what he just did? He just gave me double thumbs up, he knows me, don't you, Josh?
Josh, you want to give us a quick summary, and then maybe we'll save you some time?
I have 16 slides, and I don't imagine going through all of them.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Josh.
Happy to be super brief.
His volume's down.
Happy to be super brief, he said.
Okay, can we get the volume up a little bit? Hopefully people can hear them at home. So why don't we go, if, we have your presentation, thank you for that, very helpful. Do you want to go right to questions from the members? Is that the will of the board?
Yes.
Sure. Is that, all right, comments or questions? Ms. Musto.
Quick question for him. I was looking through some of the information. How does this code apply to municipal or school buildings? It said something like solar PV or passive house requirement, can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so it treats them as if they are commercial. So the commercial is sort of defined on, I think, slide eight for you all, there's a code application table that I can bring up. So, commercial is the sort of catch-all for things that aren't single-family or multifamily residential. The passive house standards are sort of FIAS zero, that also allows for hERS zero, which is a different style of counting sort of energy usage, where a standard building is 100 hERS, and then as you go down in number, you go up in efficiency, and hERS zero means it's 0 percent, it's effectively net zero. I mean, that's because of onsite solar generation. If the building is already all-electric, as you can see on this penultimate row, onsite solar is optional.
And just to follow up. Just a quick follow-up on that, Josh, this is, for those residents who maybe missed last, you know, I don't know why you don't tune in every week, but this is only for new buildings, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we are already a stretch code community. The stretch code was updated when they also introduced the specialized code. The specialized code that we're sort of discussing this evening applies to new construction, that's correct.
Thank you.
Members all.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Josh, I know you have the code application table up, so I was, I have a couple of questions on this one. So I'm looking at the stretch code and the specialized code, and it, as we go down, it has, if they're the same, but then they're, if so, if they're over 4,000 square feet, it looks like that's where the changes happen, or multifamily, is that correct? And then what about for electrification and onsite solar? I noticed some are white and some are a different color, so if they're a different color, does that mean that's where the change is for the electrification and the onsite solar?
So it's not really specific to the building so much as it is to the fuel type and fuel usage of those buildings. So that those mixed use, mixed-fuel buildings are those with combustion that happens within the sort of confines of the building, whether it's a water heater or cooking stove. All-electric buildings have all-electric appliances and do not have onsite combustion. The specialized code adds those requirements to allow for hERS zero or FIAS zero for homes more than 4,000 square feet, if they are mixed-fuel. So the, sort of, all-electric standards are maintained, but the mixed-fuel becomes more stringent, because the specialized code seeks to sort of develop the most energy-efficient and least impactful buildings possible. If you are having combustion onsite effectively, you need to have onsite solar to offset that.
Could I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Thank you. So if I'm looking at like a home under 4,000 square feet mixed-fuel, it looks like they're So, if I'm looking at like a home under 4,000 square feet mixed-fuel, it looks like they're required to have onsite solar?
Yes.
This is on new construction or only, correct?
New construction, yes.
And I know in the regular stretch code, it talks about additions and things like that, so that, none of that is affected with this new specialized code?
No, that is already in effect in the town of Milton because we are a stretch code community. The specialized code is simply to add additional protections for new construction.
And, and what is, I know that, that said something about a plan to get out to the community and, and have forums and explain this a little more, because I don't even know if everybody understands the regular stretch code right now, honestly, so I, I'm just wondering what the plan is.
Builders know.
Yes, builders know, and Commissioner Atsu, who is not able to join us tonight, but who, whose fingerprints are all over this presentation, we, we worked for, for a couple of hours this week and last week, so, he and I and the engineering department have committed to, do at least one public information session on stretch code, what it means for folks, as well as if this is a warrant article that is approved, what the warrant article would sort of imply. That is likely in addition to having to present at the warrant committee, and we've been in close communication with Sustainable Milton, who are some of the best sort of climate and environmental educators in town, who we fully intend to work hand in glove with to make sure we're getting as much good information out to homeowners, potential home buyers, and contractors, but contractors, I will say, have a ton of informational resources on this. When it first came out, they, they had a ton of state support for, for info and for training and all that, they are very much a key component of the state's sort of broader stretch code update, and were very influential in its design.
Just a quick one, last follow-up.
Yeah, please, yeah, please.
With regards to implementation, I know that if this gets to May, you're thinking of implementing it in January, is that correct?
Yeah, so the requirements of the specialized code adoption are that it can be sort of put into effect on either a January 1 or a July 1 start date, and it has to be at least six months since it was sort of adopted. So, a May vote would allow for six months to elapse, and then the, the next soonest date is January 1. If it were approved at a fall town meeting, for instance, then six months would elapse, and then the next available start date would be July 1.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Josh, just two quick questions about the solar, of which I'm a huge advocate, I have solar in my house, and I recommend it to everybody, I think it's just, it's a game-changer, not paying an electric bill. So, I know that there is a, an exception for, for houses with shade, how does that, how does that shade exemption get determined? Because I know when we had our solar put in, we had, you know, a, a guy from the company kind of come out and figure out what, where, where we could put panels, so who, who does that determination? And the second question is, I know there's been speculation that there are potentially going to be shortages in solar panels, and is there a contingency in place if someone's building a new home in, say, six or seven years, and there's, like, no solar panels are available?
I, I can't speak to the latter supply chain issues, I, I doubt the scale of development and adoption in Milton will be what sort of pushes it over the edge and makes it unavailable. But, but, but to your previous point on shading, I, I didn't pull the specific numbers, but I think it, it's around sort of if, if your rooftop is at least 40 percent shaded.
Okay.
That makes you ineligible for those sort of requirement for onsite solar, something to that effect similarly applies for electric vehicles, you're, in some cases, required to have a parking spot with EV charging capabilities, that does not supersede a area where there are no parking requirements, as we've adopted in some of the MBTA communities districts, so the sort of requirement to have an EV parking spot does not sort of demand that then there must be a parking spot at all, so, so it, it tries to be in line with reality and not add additional sort of impositions beyond our local regulations.
Thank you, Josh, that's very helpful.
Other, Ms. Musto.
Follow-up with regards to solar, I know in some places they have these solar discs, or whatever they're called, that are in your yard and not on the actual home, so I'm wondering, is that something that's allowed? And the other question is, just a general thought, how do, do we have any input into how the electric grid is going to handle everybody going on to, you know, electric in Massachusetts? Do we have any input on that, any update?
Yeah, to, to your first point, I think the most popular brand of that sort of pretty ground-mounted solar is the solar flower, I, I think they have it over at the Technical School in South Boston, if you're ever in that part of town. Onsite solar does not require, does not, is not required to be rooftop solar, but by and large, we've seen residents not want to give up their sort of precious backyard space in favor of a roof that could be used instead, but onsite is just onsite, it doesn't have to be rooftop, though, though, though we anticipate rooftops to be the primary point of installation, especially given that building regulations have for the last almost decade have required that roofs be, sort of, have the weight capacity to withstand having solar, so I, I would anticipate very few residents going for ground-mounted. In, in terms of grid capacity, that is a huge concern of the state, the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Energy Resources is focused on that because they intend to electrify as much as possible, it's been a big focus in our sort of local microgrid studies that we've been doing. In, in terms of what new infrastructure we can anticipate, I, I can say we anticipate new infrastructure, I anticipate new substations, as we've already seen installed throughout the state, those are some of the most popular things on the docket at the DPU, but I, I can't speak specifically to what the state intends to install, but I do know that they are all aware of the state's plan to electrify as much as possible and are working towards that goal.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Ready?
So, we have a proposed warrant article from Sustainable Milton, I don't, I don't know if that, that would be, we'd probably have to get that reviewed, oh no, we have a new.
No, we already did that.
We have a new proposed warrant article.
Yeah, this was the one that was reviewed.
This is the new one.
The draft of the warrant article is okay, it's the motion that will require some work, and we can work on that if, if the motion, if the article is placed on the warrant.
Motion for us tonight, or motion for?
The motion for a town meeting when we get there, sorry.
Can I make a motion for tonight?
Absolutely.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the request by Sustainable Milton to include their warrant article on the annual town meeting warrant for adoption of the Opt-In Specialized Building Code.
I'll second.
Which should have been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. All right, thank you, Josh, sorry for the late hour.
Thanks, Josh.
No, much easier than MBTA communities or the landings, so I had to ease up the team.
You're not going off the landing committee, so don't get any ideas.
I would love to not be a voting member, though.
All right, we might be able to do that. We do have, we do, he abstains on a lot of, like, any industry area, we have him abstained.
Thank you, Josh, for that helpful ad on, on item, on item eight as well. All right, item nine, and I don't know if you, well, Josh is gone, I don't know if he's, he's involved in this, but item nine is the letter from, that we received from the Executive Office of Environmental, Energy and Environmental Affairs about a potential DCR closure of Chickatobit Road. Mr. Milano, do you want to tee this up for us, please?
Sure, as part of the MEPA process for the proposed project at Randolph Avenue, Chickatobit Road, one of DCR's letters, or DCR's comment letter included a paragraph advising EEA, who is the MEPA authority, and Mastot, of their efforts or exploration of potentially closing Chickatobit Road, their, their line in their letter says, "DCR is assessing the feasibility of permanently closing Chickatobit Road through vehicular traffic for the long-term benefit of the Blue Hills Reservation and future visitors. The proposal to close it must be considered as an alternative design for the project, and DCR requests the establishment of a project team with Mastot and considering input from others on this as the project moves forward." So, I had reached out to DCR, didn't get much more beyond what's in this letter, I think reading between the lines, what they're talking about here really is from that gate, heading towards Braintree and Quincy, rather, not the other portion of Chickatobit, but the letter doesn't state that, they haven't publicly stated that, so I, I definitely think in terms of the town, you know, I can continue to follow up with staff, or we can draft a letter for the board's consideration, raising questions and/or concerns to DCR or EEA, and have that ready for the next meeting, if that's something the board would prefer.
So, in terms of process, we have sent in a comment letter, seems to me it probably makes sense for you to follow up with the staff, it seems to me one of the, one of the main questions is, do we want to take a position on this?
So.
And in either.
When have you done?
You know, I was just going to say, that, it seems to me, we, we may be in a position where we could take a position on this DCR assessment of feasibility for closing the road, if that's something we want to do, Mr. Wells.
So, sorry, another historical fact.
Yeah, no, please, Jeff, no, please.
So, when I was Chair of the Traffic Commission, residents came to the Select Board because the DCR was doing this, it's only gated on the Wampa Tuck side, so there's no gates going towards Poole Pond.
Right.
They were doing it, you might even, they were doing it like summertime, week here, weekends, but then they'd go like, and what it does is exacerbate the intersection, because ways, you know, and no one, they're not going to know that, and so the collision rate actually rose.
With the closure.
With the collisions, rose because people, just the, you know, they, they're going to take a left or right, and they look, what's this gate? You know, they just, because all they do is just put the gate across. So, I don't know what would be in our files, and my memory of it is, from the traffic we only took up because the Select Board came to us on it, because residents were coming to the board, and as a result of that, DCR reversed it, and it's very rare now that we see them close it anymore, and that was because it just exacerbates the intersection that much more, makes it a three-way instead of a four-way intersection.
Right.
Because it takes away the, the right-hand turn, or the left-hand turn going towards Braintree.
Right, although it's, although it seems to me, if, if there was a closure, then that would end the discussion of a roundabout. Maybe not, but that's, that's the way, that's the way, that's the way I, I interpret it, that that may end, it may, it may result in just, in just stoplights there rather than a roundabout, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm misinterpreting.
You could be.
Because it talked about an alternative design, must be considered as an alternative as design, alter, not good language, but alternative as design of the intersection's improvement progress, project progresses, so, so it talked about the, the project and the proponent of the project, which was the roundabout, and then it's talking about closing Chickatobit and having an alternative, so that's, I interpreted this as an alternative to a roundabout, but maybe I'm incorrect, and maybe that needs to be clarified, but Ms. Musto, you might have a different view.
Thank you, so, a few things I would say about this one is, the consideration of the closer, closure of Chickatobit, it, it hasn't been presented to anybody in the community before, we just got this letter, and it's, and it outlines this, I, I think that's a serious roadway alter, you know, altering, a serious consideration, it's just sort of interesting, and it seems that it's being considered, but I also read it as it's being considered as well as making a roundabout at that location, because they didn't clearly say, you know, that we would take it out, I mean, you know, so you could read, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Chair, but you could read it a bunch of different ways.
That's true, that's true.
I went back and looked at a lot of the, the information that we had before, and I will back it up by saying, when they came and we had the meeting with them, we had asked them also to do things with the lights and the left turn and all that, I don't know where we are with any of that, but in 2018, Howard Stein Hudson, which is the engineers that they have used, they're traffic engineers, they provided a technical memorandum on May 23 of 2018, and on the last page of it, which is page 54, it's under conclusions, it says, "Alternative three is recommended over the roundabout as cost and construct, on constructability of the roundabout will present challenges for the project going forward." And I think, again, you know, you're not going to have to do all of these considerations, I believe, of road, of road changes or enlarging that intersection if they just put the left-hand turn signalization there, or at least trying it, you know what I mean?
They're trying it, I go through it all the time, they're trying it.
Are they now trying it?
Well, they have it, they have it, my understanding is that they have it between, now Chase told me, it's between nine and six, maybe?
On the northbound.
Twelve and six, twelve and six during the day, well, I'm going to get it wrong, but it's, it's for a period during the day, they have the, and I think it ends at six, they have the left-hand turn signal on, they turn it off, but it's not all the time.
Do they have the, the line that it's a left-hand turn lane, or just the signal?
No, no, just the signal.
I don't think they have, I don't know how they're going to do that, but.
Just the signal, that's right.
Okay, interesting.
Mr. Zull.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, so it seems to me, I, I think we should learn more, obviously, you know, just sort of eyeballing the map, and obviously, like all of you guys, I've driven through that intersection a bunch, I don't know that there's any Milton residences once you go that direction on Chickatobit, up and tilt Braintree, I don't think that there's any citizens that live on that portion of the road, right? It's, it's all parkland, so to me, I, you know, it could, if, if you're eliminating that sort of ability to go from Braintree up to Randolph there, could cut down on a significant amount of cut-through traffic and reduce the sort of overall volume on Randolph, which would be fantastic. I was also reading it in the way that Mr. Zullis was reading it, and that it would be an alternative to the roundabout, which I think would be welcomed by a lot of folks as well, so I think we should seriously consider, and we certainly would want to learn a little bit more, and we'd want to talk, of course, to the, you know, adjacent neighbors about it, but to me, that, it could be a good alternative to installing a roundabout, and I think, you know, if, to Mr. Wells's point about ways and Google Maps and everything, if, if that's permanently closed, then that would get, then, then that would eliminate that problem because there would.
If it goes out, yeah, if it became a permanent, right.
Yeah, so then, because I, I think that your point is very well-taken about the gate causing more confusion than, than anything else, but if it was permanently closed, I, you know, you would eliminate that, and it might, might make it easier for the, on the, the west side of Chickatobit, residents who do use that as a turnout, it would make it a little easier for them, because they're not competing against traffic that's also trying to come out the other direction from the Braintree side, so those are just my thoughts. I think, I don't know that we need to approve anything tonight, but I think we should probably think about drafting a letter to get some clarification on, on the intersection.
As Mr. Milano suggested earlier, Ms. Musto.
Yes, I think we don't know what the traffic implications of closing that are, I mean, there's a significant amount of traffic that uses that section, and I think, you know, I think that.
Excuse me, sorry.
That's okay. I think that, you know, to assume that it's going to be a good thing, we don't know that, we don't know how that's going to affect the traffic pattern, that's a, that's a road that's pretty well-used.
I use it too.
And to, and to just close it, I, I mean, it's a serious implication, so I, I think if we're going to draft some letter, I mean, we have to talk about, you know, that there's no public, there's been no public process, we just got a letter saying all of this, I don't know that the neighbors know, I don't know that anybody that was not interested in a roundabout knows, and I don't know that it's not going to negatively affect the traffic pattern on 28 over there, I think it could potentially make it a lot worse, so I don't know that, and I think that these are all considerations that we really, you know, have to be aware of, I would hate to think that they're going to, you know, do something and there's been no public process, and we have no information knowing how that's going to affect a traffic pattern.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wells.
So, just to follow up to two points, both Mr. Zull's point and, just, it's late, is that it is, it is a, that cut-off particularly, from Willard Street to 28, is a heavily-used commute alternative.
From which street, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Willard, at Wampa Tuck.
Oh, Willard, yep, yep, yep.
Willard, to Chick, is a huge to avoid any alternative to split.
Yeah.
And, and if we do shut that down, then are we pushing all this traffic, does that then go to Pleasant, does that go to 28, does that back up 28 neighbors that bleed more, you know, we see how, I mean, I don't know if, I see, you see how much Pleasant backs up from St. Ease on 28 going towards East Milton Square, particularly in the PM commute, trying to take a left, and then how much 28 backs up with, in Chickatobit, if you use, on the PM commute, Chickatobit. commute, Chikatobit Road some days is backed up almost all the way to the reservoir.
Yeah.
Going across, so that's, I, I can see, DCR wants to use this from a usage of the Blue Hills point of view, and there are two, two, two aspects that I could see the Blue Hills, friends of the Blue Hills way in, is the Chikatobit, that takes out the Chikatobit over, and it takes out the Mass Audubon Camp, which is the first write-up at the Nike Center, which is where our water tower is. So just, I, I agree, I think we need, I don't wanna do anything tonight, but I think we need to, I could see why they're doing it, and I could see, you're like, could that? But I think you need to think, you know, just as we saw, you know, you, we both, you were on, there's no perfect answer to cheese, I say cheese, I call it's like, traffic is like Swiss cheese. You block one hole, it finds another hole. It just, it just, and so that's the, there's no, you said it, there's no quick answer to traffic.
So maybe one of the things we can do in letters is request traffic analysis.
To look at it, yeah.
To look at it, if they're gonna, if they're, while they're assessing this, they should do a traffic analysis. But now, what we have is something we didn't have in the past, which is, which is traffic modeling software, and we have a traffic consultant. So we can, we can check any conclusions and any traffic analysis with our own.
Is it Beta or is it Howard Stein?
It's Beta.
It is Beta, alright.
Beta, Beta, that's our traffic consultant, and then we have the traffic modeling software as well. So we could do our own analysis, but perhaps we find out what they think first, or, you know, ask them to do it first before we spend time. Mr. Zoll, sorry.
Thank you. No, I, thank you, Mr. Zulis, just a quick point. I, I think in the letter too, we want to make sure that we're talking about downstream effects of the traffic, so not just the effects on the intersection, because that's what we saw when they were talking about the roundabout, making sure that that, we understand what the effects are for Randolph going into Milton.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I think we also want to let them know that, that we had expressed to DOT, to look at other alternatives. Because, you know, they're just, for instance, DCR, they may not know that. They may only know that this is the one plan that they're looking at. And I think that's really important, that they know that we had expressed that we, you know, we want to look at some of the other alternatives.
Very interesting point, Ms. Musto. Because you could see a scenario where we suggested, we think light, lights with left-hand turns are a better solution than a roundabout, perhaps DCR would agree with us. Conceivably. Mr. Wells.
In these type decisions, the biggest hurdle to overcome is, part of the reason they picked this is they found it to be the safest. So we'll have, we have to prove to them that this would be safer. Because once they find the safest, they're kind of like, they have to commit to it.
But balanced against the concerns raised by DCR.
Right, I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it.
For the environmental, the environmental concerns raised by DCR, so that would be the balance.
I think this is very, sorry.
Yeah, no, please, go ahead.
I mean, to me, I'm heartened by this, because it shows that they are listening to us, they've heard that we're, our concerns about the roundabout, they're looking at other solutions. So I, I think this is positive. I mean, I know it's coming from, you know, different, you know, it's coming from, not, it's coming from DCR or wherever, not, not traffic.
Their parochial interests, yes.
You know, everybody's keeping their eye on this, and the fact that they're throwing another solution at this, I think shows a willingness to continue to explore the issue. So I, I just, I just want to put it out there that I think it's a positive development. I'm not saying that we need to do it, but I think that it does show that they're, they are negotiating a little bit here in, in the solution. So I think we should, you know, we should take heart that this has been brought forward as an idea.
Ms. Musto.
And I do think it's, thank you, and I do think it's important, again, to just stress that we were looking at these other alternatives. Because, again, you know, we assume that all of these departments are talking to each other, and all know what the other one is, what's been said, and I don't know that.
I think it's a good point.
You know.
I think it's a good point, and, and they may not, they may have differing interests. In fact, they probably do have differing interests.
They definitely have competing interests, absolutely.
Right. But it is interesting that their own report that I had a copy of did state that, that they were looking at a different alternative.
The DOT, the DOT report, yes.
Yeah, when they used Howard Stein Hudson from 2018, so.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Thank you.
Alright, well, so Mr. Milano, maybe we can have something to look at for our next meeting.
Sure.
Alright, item 10, Discussion Update Approval Annual Town Meeting, warrant articles. So we have a long list of warrant articles, we have our recurring annual articles, so we could, as a suggestion, approve for the warrant our annual recurring articles. We could, as a suggestion, approve.
Second. You have a motion outside, second.
And then we could approve the December 23 special town meeting articles that were deferred. And then, and then we've already done the opt-in for the building code, we have a placeholder for the planning board on MBTA Communities, and then we have some others we haven't discussed yet. We have another citizen's petition that we'll have, that we'll have to go on. But anyway, so a suggestion is that we, we vote to include the recurring articles and the December 23, 2023 special town meeting articles.
We call that a motion.
So I'll make a motion to include on the warrant the recurring annual articles and the December 23, 23 special town meeting articles as listed on the agenda.
I'll second. You already seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
We just hit a whole half a page in 30 seconds, let's go.
Item 11, Traffic Commission, Traffic Commission Update.
Meeting's Thursday night, right?
Yeah, this, yeah, Thursday is in the 25th, and then they'll report to the Select Board at our next meeting.
Alright, any, anything further on this?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Mr. Zoll.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Do we know if the, so for this meeting, obviously, we heard from some residents this evening of a road next to Governor's Road. Are they gonna be able to look at sort of the multiple roads at one time?
Yes.
So, yes, eventually, the Traffic Commission agenda is already posted, it's definitely specific. The first agenda item is Governor's Road, this beta group is coming in to do a presentation, make their recommendations to what they think the town should do to Governor's Road. We have beta group at our disposal to look at these broader questions, but it sounded like, we'll see what the folks' reaction is to their recommendations, go from there. Traffic Commission meets roughly monthly, so if there are further discussion to be had about other roads, we can certainly take that up.
Great, thank you.
Anything further on this? Item 12, Discussion Update.
Rock Sam, Rock Sam.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I apologize.
I just had a quick question, and I hate to do this, but back on the, the articles.
Yes.
Was there, there was one that came in that was a late citizen's petition, did we discuss?
We didn't, we didn't, you mean the new citizen's petition?
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't act on that one.
Okay.
We could, if we, if you want to discuss it now, or I thought maybe we just wait on these, these other requests.
Perfect, thank you.
We acted on the opt-in tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
But the other one, the other one, two, three, four, five are, are not acting on as yet.
Sure, thank you.
Alright, item 12, Discussion Update 2025 Budget, Ms. Bradley.
We have not met since the last time that we gave a report. The Governor's budget is due out tomorrow, so I will kick it over to Nick for anything else.
Yes, yeah, we have a Finance Committee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday morning. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee is also meeting next Thursday morning, February 1st. So momentum starting on the budget.
Okay. Any comments or questions beyond that? Alright, so more to come on the budget. Item 13, Discussion Approval Request of Parks and Recreation to Reserve the Baron Hugo Gazebo for the 2024 Summer Concert.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the use of the Baron Hugo Gazebo by Park, Milton Park and Recreation on June 5th, June 12th, June 19th, June 26th, holding rain date of June 6th to the 5th, July 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st with rain dates of the 7th and 14th.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 14, Discussion Approval of One-Day Liquor License.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve one-day liquor licenses for the Milton Out Center, 334 Edge Hill Road, 1. The Winter Comedy Show to be held January 27, 2024, that's this Saturday from 7:30 to 10:00 p.m. First Friday Out Exhibit February 2nd, 2024, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. First Friday Music, March 1st, 2024, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. First Friday Music, April 5th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. First Friday Music, June 7th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 15, Discussion Approval of Appointment Contract Between Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator, and the Town of Milton. The proposal here is to amend the Town Administrator's employment contract to reflect, to reflect an increase of 2.5% for fiscal year 2024.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that a motion in the exact words that you just said.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Thank you.
I will just say that it is well-deserved, and, and this will be for fiscal year 2024, and then we'll take up the fiscal year 2025 in a more timely manner, perhaps.
It's 11:30 tonight.
Perhaps next, perhaps next June, before, before the fiscal year starts in, in July. So, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, unanimous.
Thank you.
Discussion Approval of Motion, of Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chair, I didn't have a chance to read the minutes, they came out a little late, which, no, no fault of anyone's, but I won't be prepared to vote on them tonight, because I haven't run through them.
So, any, any objection to deferring the meeting minutes?
No. Oh, you want to defer them?
Deferr.
Alright, okay.
I'll just note that Lynn sent them to me, so she did, obviously, she did her heavy lifting, and so I forgot to press forward, and that was myself.
And she's, she's been under the weather.
She's been a little under the weather.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
So, okay, no, no issue with deferring, that's not a problem at all. Because of the good work she's done keeping us up to date, there's no issue with deferring. Item 17, Town Administrator's Report.
With the late hour, I, I don't have anything to add this evening, Mr. Chair.
Item 18, Chair's Report, same, at the late hour, and I'll defer until the next meeting. Item 19, Public Comment Response. Seeing none. Item 20, Future Meeting Dates. Now, we had a discussion last time about whether it made sense to move forward on Tuesday, February 13th. I think the consensus was that it doesn't, because of our election on that day. So the question is, how do we meet between now and February 27th? And so we don't have too much of a, of a lag there, there's been some discussion about maybe meeting next Tuesday, although I think there's some issues with next Tuesday. Mr. Zoll, we talked about, there's been some discussion of maybe next Thursday, the 1st.
We can't do that.
Can't make that one. So, so, the week after is the week of the, the week after next is the week of the?
Fifth. Tuesday would be the 6th, right? Tuesday would be the 6th, and Thursday would be the 8th.
Mr. Chair.
That's right, yeah.
I, if, if folks are flexible on non, the Wednesday, the 31st would work for me of that week.
Wednesday, the 31st.
As would.
Wednesday, the 31st, no, Wednesday, the 31st is, yeah, you're tied up, Wednesday, the 31st.
Next week doesn't, I, next week's a very tough week for me. But, but, Mr., could I make a point?
Yes, sure, Mr. Wells.
Do you think maybe we could do a quick, any day, like a morning, and just to get rid of the, I could do that next week. Like, anything that's, anything necessary to get that done?
I could do any day.
I could do that. Anything that, like, I could take an hour in the morning, or just, with the exception of Thursday, because we have capital.
We, we have a budget on Tuesday, the 30th.
What time are you?
Eight.
How, what time do you finish?
Nine.
Nine, but I can't, I can't.
Oh, you can't?
Yeah.
What was up with February 6?
But I could do the Monday, the Wednesday, the Thursday.
February 6, someone had a problem with February 6.
I can't do the 6th, I'm gonna be in Miami.
So, do we want to?
I can do any Thursdays or Tuesdays at night, but I can do any day, any day.
Yeah, I can do any day, any day, until we get into March. But I need, I mean, if we had to do something, any day for an hour, even, even one hour next week, or one hour the week after.
Other than the, other than the budget meeting, I could do it, any morning, other than Tuesday. Actually, sorry.
What are we anticipating is going to be on it, on a meeting? Because if we start going with a daytime one, and people expect us at night, you know, I'm just trying to anticipate what, what we're anticipating, because right now, we're not gonna meet till the 27th, correct?
If we don't meet on the 13th, that's correct.
Okay, so what do we anticipate we're gonna have come up, is my question.
That's what I'm saying, to do, like, we just, to get rid of the administrative things, so that we don't come in on the 27th and have five pages of stuff.
Right, but there might be other things, that's what I'm trying to anticipate.
So a couple of the pressing items are the budget.
Yep.
That's a pressing item.
The Traffic Commission.
The Traffic Commission Report, the Traffic Commission from, from Thursday night, we want to move on that as quickly as possible. And then, if something further comes up on MBTA Communities, there may be something we need to consider on that as well.
And the other thing is, sorry, the warrant articles, if, if we're gonna move any of those other warrant articles onto the warrant, doing that timely for the warrant committee's purpose, and that could certainly be more of a daytime conversation, just to put it on the warrant.
Those are the things we could do daytime, that no one's gonna come and speak to.
So the Budget Committee meets on the 20, on the, on the 30th, so if we're gonna include it, we should meet after the Budget Committee meets. So, that the morning of the 31st, the morning of the 1st, the morning of the 2nd?
I can't do the Wednesday or Friday, I have a student with me all day.
I'll do any of those.
How about Thursday? The Thursday, the 1st in the morning?
What time are we thinking of? Like, we're thinking like an hour, quickly? I mean, we have all those things.
Eight AM start?
I have capital.
Eight AM start?
We have capital, we'll be down at 8:30.
You'll be done at 8:30.
8:45 ladies.
Do I do 9?
We could do a 9:00.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah, 9:00 definitely.
Is that the 1st?
That's the 1st, Thursday, the 1st, does that work? Oh, we can move that.
We can just do it.
Oh, the, the 9 AM.
That's us.
That's us, with the Select Board Agenda Prep meeting, but we can.
Well, we won't have a meeting the following Tuesday.
Alright, we won't have a meeting, we won't have to do it.
Is that okay? Does that work for you?
Yep.
Okay.
And how long do you anticipate that will be? So what time, what time are we doing it at?
We're talking about 9:00 on Thursday, the 1st, 9:00 a.m.
When we block 90 minutes max, just to be on the, how's that? That way, we don't get.
Okay, so it would be 9:00 to 10:30.
Yeah.
And for planning purposes, assuming the traffic commission makes a recommendation, is the board okay with hearing their recommendations on a Thursday morning meeting?
Yeah, oh, I don't know, it's up to you.
So there's a balance, right? You want to have, you want to give the residents a chance to be there, but I think they want, but they're gonna be at the traffic commission, I think. But they also want things done as quickly as possible, so there's a balance. Why don't we reach out to Liz Dillon and Ryan Malkagi, and see if, if that's okay with them? I, I think they're gonna want to move forward, you know, depending on the traffic commission's recommendation, I think they're probably gonna want us to move sooner rather than later.
And there was an issue with Thursday, the 8th at night?
I can't do the 8th.
That's what the, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Well, because it's not a usual day.
No, 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 I know, I just, I just.
This can't do that.
I heard you say it, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
No, I was just throwing it out there, but, you know, I'm, I'm part of the reason why we can't do some of the other bits, so.
Me too.
We're all working, we're all doing very well.
We all schedule around our usual times.
We're all doing very well. All right, so that's what we'll, we'll pencil in.
We'll post tomorrow, you gonna post tomorrow? Oh, whatever, we're gonna post.
Oh, let's, we'll work on the agenda between now and then.
Yeah, but not.
But not tomorrow.
Oh, no, no.
I'm going tomorrow.
As long as we check in with Liz and the, and the folks on Governor's, I think those are the citizens that'll be the most interested.
I think if, if the, if the traffic commission comes with a recommendation that they're amenable to, I think the meeting is just, we're just gonna rub a stamp, but it's just, it's just our vote that codifies it into, into an action.
So then we're not meeting again till the 27th?
Currently as scheduled, that's right, because of the, the election on the 13th.
Because the week of, I'm leaving on, isn't there a school vacation week?
There is, it's the week of the 19th.
Yeah, I'm out of state for that week, those seven days.
I mean, if we need to meet, we need to meet.
Oh, I could do, yeah, so if we have to, like, Zoom, I could do a Zoom, I just won't.
Can you participate from Mexico? Because that's why I'm gonna be in Kansas.
I, I did it from Brussels.
I will be right in Massachusetts, I'm not going anywhere, so thank you all, world travelers.
I'm only going to New Hampshire.
All right, well, I think we at least have a meeting for next week, and then we'll, we'll take it from there. Item 21, future agenda items.
I got nothing.
We can, I think we just talked about them. Item 22, executive session, do we have executive session items, Mr. Milano?
I did inform the board about one of the items, if there are any questions that we can speak to in an executive session, otherwise, the union is meeting to ratify it tomorrow. We have to take it up at a future meeting anyway, so it's up to the board.
Does the board wish to move an executive session? All right, we will, we will defer on item 22. Item 23.
Yeah. We have to do that, don't we?
No, that's a motion to adjourn.
No, don't we have to do this?
Then we're gonna talk about that.
Oh, but we do have to do that, right?
We have to adjourn as the select board.
Well, we'll have to talk about, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn as a select board. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn as a select board. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we have the Governor Stoughton Trust, we have the responses to requests for potential.
Do you want to call to order?
Propusers, what's that?
We call to order, that's a good.
Well, I, I want to ask if you, I want to ask two questions before we go, we're called to order.
You want to do this at 11 o'clock?
What's that? Well, let me ask the question. The first question is, Mr. Milano, is this time sensitive, and it can't be done next Thursday, the 1st? And then, so I guess that's the first question.
So we have moved the response deadline from January to February 16th. If the, we're not gonna get out the couple of these, if we're not gonna get this addendum out this week, then I would suggest that that response deadline moves again. If everybody's comfortable with moving that response deadline another two weeks, then, then there's no issue with taking it up another week, but that'll, that's the question.
How detailed are these questions that were?
There's two substantive items to discuss, one of which I don't think takes a long discussion, and the other one probably doesn't.
Is it, is it something, well, let's try to take it, let's take it up. Let's, let's call the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust to order, let's call the meeting to order. And this is item 2, which is discussion approval, town farm request for proposal, responses to questions from potential proposers, Mr. Milano.
Sure, I'll take the one I think is a little more straightforward first. We had a number of response, potential proposers ask about the maximum number of units on the project, inquiring whether the, the trust would be interested in more units in order to enable these developers to hit the affordability goals set out in the RFP. I've drafted an answer here that says no, that the maximum number of units is 35. Any proposal with more than 35 units will be rejected. But before making that a final answer, I did want to make sure the trust didn't want to reconsider the number of units. I haven't heard any interest in doing so, but I just did want to double-check in with the trust.
I think that's, I would agree with that. No change to the maximum number of units.
Any other comments on this side? I agree with that as well.
Okay. And then the other big question is the funding sources, which is addressed at the top of the addendum there, and this kind of speaks to the number of units. If the trust is comfortable with, essentially, the developers will present a financial pro forma, and the question is, can they include in that pro forma sources of funds that would make the proposal conditional? So those source of funds would be the Milton Affordable Housing Trust funds or, and/or funds through the South Shore Home Consortium, where a member of the South Shore Home Consortium development projects in Milton are eligible for funds through that, with our partners in Quincy and a few other communities. Home assistance projects, they have to be, they have to meet the federal regulations, which I believe are 60% at area median income, and 20 of them percent, 20%. All households funded with homes, money must be at 60% of AMI or lower, and 20% of home units have to be at 50% of median income or lower. So the question to the trust is, is it okay if proposers include in their pro forma a amount of money from either of these funding, potential funding sources?
How do they know they have that money?
That's what would make their offer, their proposal conditional. So the trust would be evaluating these proposals. Some proposer might come in, and it would be all financed with private money or other source of funding. Another proposal might have half a million dollars from these two sources of funding, which would be subject to future approvals by those boards. So, it creates a little bit more challenging evaluation process around the finances, but the Affordable Housing Trust has stated many times that it expects that to put money on the table here, and all projects in Milton are eligible to go after this home consortia money. So, I had been looking at it as, after the final proposal is selected, the town could approach the proposer and say, what can you do if we can put this money on the table to, to increase the affordability or to increase the number of units? So kind of do it after the fact, but we could certainly do it before the fact if, if, if that's something that the trust is interested in.
I don't see a problem with it.
It seems like it adds flexibility, Ms. Musto.
Yes, I have a couple of questions with that. I'm wondering, why would we want to go partnership with an entity to build something when we have money in the trust that we could do our own thing?
That's, that's the policy decision, correct? So that, that trust money could go to deepen the affordability or to make this project much more viable and have lower affordability units and more affordable units.
But then you're tied to, if we didn't do something ourselves, if we wanted to do something, say, 100% affordable for elderly, for instance, if we wanted to do something with another entity, then you're going in partnership with another entity. And your partnership with, where the town could get their own builder if they wanted to do something, or they could take the, the buildings that are there and rehab them.
Yep, no, that, that's, that's right, that's the policy decision. The Affordable Housing Trust has spoken about wanting to put money towards Town Farm. Their, their application to CPA last year, when they got funding through CPA, was, you know, making that connection to Town Farm pretty explicit. So I, that's why I brought the question to the trust, because I didn't want to issue this without the trust buy-in.
So the trust money, we would take trust money?
Affordable Housing Trust.
I know, I, I used to, I don't mean that money, I mean, I mean, AHT.
As opposed to Governor's.
So, so you take, so an applicant for this RFP can apply the Affordable Housing Trust for money, up to how much? Who determines?
Affordable Housing Trust.
Like, could you fund the whole project if you want? I mean, I know, I know you don't have that much money, but like.
So, so, so the Affordable Housing Trust, I think, is, is interested in partnering, may be interested in partnering with one of the developers.
To buy the SHI down.
To increase the number of affordable units. Or to, to Musto's point, to increase different types of affordable units, to increase affordability. Right, so, so Affordable Housing Trust or the South Shore Consortium could put money towards the project in order to increase the affordability.
And South Shore's never done that in Milton, though, have they, to, in any of our part? Not that, not in my time.
Not, not to my knowledge.
I never heard that word before, tonight. Go ahead, Ben, I, you're there, you sit on it now.
So I think, I mean, we haven't built that much affordable housing, so it's probably why you haven't heard about it. I think, you know, for this, it's just, it provides a little more flexibility for the, for the folks who are applying, we can still make the decisions about the financing, you know, as we're considering the applications, or as Nick said, you know, we were thinking about doing it even after the applications are done, and we've got a final selected, we can still approach them and talk to them about.
If they don't even put it in their RFP, you could approach and say, will you buy, because there've been similar discussions with some of the prior projects that we, that came from the 700 that we had, those were some of the questions that were posed.
Right, so we could say, we'll underwrite, you know, X amount of dollars, and then, so you can have that many more that are affordable. This just kind of moves that process earlier, if they wanted to do it, but they wouldn't have to do it.
So what do you want, a yes from us, or what do you want us?
I don't, yes, I, I want to make sure the trust is on board with that. It was mentioned at the site visit by Julie from the Affordable Housing Trust, so we need to codify her statement or clarify her statement to make it official.
Do we need a motion on that, or is it?
I think we need a motion to approve the, the responses to questions from proposed proposer, from potential proposers. Say that three times fast.
I, there was one other item I wanted to draw the trust attention to, when you're good. Okay, so the other two elements are that we got a number of questions about the maximum number of units, buildings, rather, on site. So, the way we phrase the responses here is that there may be up to four buildings on the site, one of which is required to be the pest house, so if they want to reuse the three existing buildings, they can. But there was a question saying, could we, could we have as many as six buildings on site? Which I didn't feel was what folks were looking for.
Correct. I think that just gets you an even bigger fight, like that.
And they asked if the pest house building could be moved, which we said yes to, but.
Yeah, we said the pest house has to remain as part of the project, but can, doesn't need to remain exactly where it is on the location.
Oh, I know, I know. What's the third building? They're talking about using the shelters, like, potentially, oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, there historically had been the, if they wanted to kind of remake what historically had been.
Right, so the arms, the men's arms, the pest house, and then where the barn was?
Right.
Yep. Ms. Musto.
Wondering if Mr. Milano can talk a little bit about what types of people are inquiring about this? Are they looking at, what types of housing are they looking at?
So, there's really not a lot of back and forth at this point. We have a list of the firms and the contact person. They're smaller nonprofit type of development firms that work in this, you know, capacity of the smaller units. When, when reaching out to some development firms, a number had responded that this is a smaller project than they typically take on, so it's kind of the groups of developers who would work in this number of units field.
Are there certain age groups or anything with this that you have?
We don't have proposals to that effect yet.
You don't have a proposal yet, you don't know what, you don't know what's coming.
Yeah, but you might have certain developers that do certain things.
None of the names stood out to me in terms of what they, that they're tied to one type of projects, are known for an explicit type of project.
I can say that the Affordable Housing Trust is not interested in a seniors-only development. 97% of the affordable housing that we've built in town has been for seniors. We want to make sure that there's some families that can live in this space, too. And that's, I think, in, in the RFP, in terms of like the types of units, when there's requirements for particular numbers of bedrooms.
Roxanne, it's Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Zoll, but I do have to say that the largest growing demographic is a 65 and older demographic, according to any study that's out there. And especially if we're gonna do other kinds of housing in town, and people might be moving into smaller units, you know, into, say, MBTA Communities and, and leaving their homes, families will be going in there. I think that, again, the Town Farm is for the poor of Milton. And so, I, anything that goes there, I'm a little concerned that, for affordability, if it's not 100% for our residents, meaning in the town.
It can't legally be 100%.